Bow our heads. Thank you, Lord, for giving us this opportunity again to work on the issues that confront our city, grant us patience and wisdom, and the desire to do your will as always. Bless all that are here, and we have a good discussion. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and infinite.
There we go. All right. Folks, please remember who we are. Yeah, turn it on. Just reminding everybody rules are decorum or fact. Basically, be respectful for what somebody else has to say, and I'll expect them to be just as respectful for what you have to say. No outbursts and no under-the-breath comments against each other. We're all better than that. Okay? Before I get into the next thing, which is going to be a proclamation, Saturday we had some very tragic news. Former council member Scott Turnbull passed away Saturday. He was an awesome guy, guys, or folks. You know, he and I didn't always agree on everything, but we found common ground in talking about farming and dogs and things like that. And he was a very smart individual, and it was sad to see that he passed away Saturday. Funeral arrangements and all that stuff are forthcoming. I don't know when they are yet. I have not seen that. But if you'll please keep his family in your prayers, because that's a hard thing when somebody loses a family member like that. Because he was one of our city council members and he did good things here, he needs to be remembered for that. All right. The next thing is going to be a proclamation where I get to do all those whereas, what is, because this is Child Abuse Awareness Month. Do we have somebody that will just... Oh, Patricia, okay. I didn't see her when I walked in. All right. Patricia, come on up to the front.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
There we go. Great. Mayor Shore and city council members, just wanted to say thank you for recognition and how important this really is. You know, as we're gathered here this evening, it's really easy to feel like child abuse doesn't exist, but the sad reality is that rages in the background of our lives, like an unrecognized and unreported healthcare pandemic that impacts one in 10 children. And so, the Children's Advocacy Center is the only agency of its kind in Rockwall County, and we work collaboratively with partner agencies to help reduce barriers to outcries. We help remove barriers to making sure children are not revictimized in the process, and we help strengthen the investigative and prosecution elements of that. So we're so thankful for proclamations like this, and as you may see throughout the county, lots of supporters and other small businesses, whether it's food service or retailers or even service industry, helping to create awareness by going blue. And so, April is big in terms of creating awareness, which ultimately leads to prevention. So we're so thankful and appreciate this recognition, and it's just amazing to see how much we've grown. As our population continues to increase, as Keith said, we started in 2016, we were expected to see about 12 cases per month. Our first year, we served 179 unduplicated children. Last year, we served 857 unduplicated children. So in a five-year span, we've served close to 2,000 unduplicated children and their families in our community. And so, that's why we're here. Some people think, wow, that's a really hard job, and it is. It's a weighty job. It's a serious job, but we're also so very blessed to get to witness the healing that takes place because of the services that we offer. So we're thankful for our community, and we thank you all for helping to create awareness and prevention.
Thank you, Patricia. Moving on to the next thing, 5.1, a presentation by MC Trilogy.
Mayor, council members, Misty Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. On behalf of the property owner, MC Trilogy, I will be one of three presenters related to Agenda Item 5.1. I expect you'll see us back for other Agenda Items, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6. As the first presenter related to the Trilogy project on Agenda Item 1, I am here to share with you how proud I am to represent the Huffines family and this property owner, MC Trilogy. This is a project that I've personally been working on for over three years. As you are aware, this is a multi-jurisdictional project, partly within the city limits and partly within the ETJ. I remain hopeful, based on prior approvals and contemplated future actions, that we will see affirmative votes this evening to annex this property that is currently in McLendon-Chisom's ETJ into the city limits. From a historical perspective, I'd like to share with you and remind the community that we all want what's best for this community, and a high-quality, master-planned community implemented in accordance with negotiated standards is important to the community. This is a project that will not create problems, but will solve problems. This is a project that contemplates solving water problems, solving roadway problems, solving infrastructure problems. This is a project that was heavily negotiated by some of you in the seats here today and others that have moved on to other passions related to leadership in this community. The first formal approval for the Trilogy project that vested rights to the project and set the roadmap in place for the development was approved by McLendon-Chisom's Council October 27, 2021. That vesting event laid out all of the uses for the project. We recognize, as you recognize, that cities do not have zoning authority in the ETJ. Cities do not get to apply their comprehensive plan in the ETJ. ETJ property could have been developed with much more intense uses than were negotiated. Because of the collaborative spirit of this council and this property owner, a compromise was struck that will produce quality development within the city limits using an infrastructure financing tool, Rockwall County MUD Number 10, to finance very much needed water, sewer, roads, and drainage, not only for this project specifically, but for the benefit of the community as a whole. That initial approval was coupled with consent to an in-city district, Rockwall County MUD Number 10. That district exists today in the city limits of McLendon-Chisom. It has already been activated by a confirmation election. It has already incurred debt to begin financing the much-needed public infrastructure. The next separate and second vested rights event for this project was an approved preliminary plat. This council approved a preliminary plat for the entire project. This council has received an application for infrastructure plans for the major infrastructure. Those civil plans are being reviewed as we speak. We are moving forward with all of the commitments that we planned to do when we all entered into the agreement, October 27, 2021. We have honored our commitments as a property owner, including the commitment to petition for voluntary annexation. And we're here tonight, not only to share the vision for the project, but to ask you to honor your commitments in that same agreement. With that, by way of introduction, I would like to introduce Colin Huffines, as well as Philip Huffines, who is going to share with the community a little more detail on the vision for Trilogy. Colin? Oh, I'm sorry. Philip's next.
Misty, you are so succinct. I'm impressed every time you speak. Council members, for the last several months, you have been berated by a small group. This group's been angry, emotional, and they have verbally attacked you. They have attacked me and my integrity. They have attacked your city attorney, Mr. Hala, your city manager, Mr. Hildebrandt, and the entire council. They've attacked you personally. I congratulate and admire each of you. I admire you for your restraint, your continuous polite demeanor, and the citizens of MC should be proud of you and their leaders for how well you've handled this undeserved abuse. The organizers of this mob mentality are Mr. Steinhegen and Ms. Joe. What motivates Mr. Steinhegen and Ms. Joe? I can tell you what motivates them. They love attention. They like to be the ones who create the gossip so that others come to them for more gossip. They promote themselves with half-truths, exaggeration, and downright outright lies. All of this to gain power and to stir things up. Mr. Steinhegen is a political animal. He's desperate to get a flock of followers. He uses social media, as Ms. Joe, to stir things up and create followers. They care more... And I'm going to ask you, do they care about McLendon-Chisom? No. They only care about themselves. What is best for them? That's what they care about. They strive to create this mob mentality based on emotion and distortion of the truth to gain more followers. Don't be fooled by Mr. Steinhegen. He's running for city council, and he loves to grandstand. Even last night at the P&amp;Z meeting, he had the audacity to state that he was for property rights. What a joke. The only thing he stands for is himself. He seeks to manipulate others regardless of the truth. Tonight, in Citizens Input, you may once again be bombarded by Ms. Joe, Mr. Steinhegen, and their followers, their mob mentality, parroting what they have been told to say. And again, I'm sorry you have to endure this. Now, changing to Trilogy, I just had to get that out because my integrity's been attacked. Two years ago, when I first approached McLendon-Chisom about Trilogy, I only had one objective, and that was to create a fabulous, high-end destination for homes in a master-planned community, the best in all of DFW, if not Texas. But after several months and about a year and a half ago, we realized that I needed to add another objective to that goal, and that is to help MC solve its water problem, to get in the water business if they so choose. And so, we've been focused on that for the last 18 months. And now, I'd like to show you, first introduce some of the new council members and the audience about who we are. Who is Huffines? Ready, Colin?
This is a PowerPoint presentation that we presented about two... Is this on? Yeah. Two and a half years ago, two years ago, to the city council and to the audience that was here at the time. So a lot of you weren't here, so I'd like to introduce you to this PowerPoint. Okay, who is Huffines Community? We've been in business about 35, 40 years. If you've ever bought a new car, let's hope you bought it from my brother or my father. If you're really old, you may have bought it from my grandfather. My grandfather started that business in 1926. We've been in this area for over almost 100 years, and our integrity and reputation is very important. So, what did we do different? So, we got into real estate. When I say we, I have a twin brother. You probably haven't seen him, and I like to say this. We get around twice as often as anybody else because of identity. So, if you say, hey, and I'm not paying attention to you and I know you, it's probably because you're talking to him. Okay? We had this problem growing up. Anyway, seeing beyond the obvious, that's our company motto. We've been in real estate, and we focus on what are the best master-planned communities in America? So we traveled to California, we went to Florida to see Celebration back in the early 2000s, late, it was in the 90s. And so, the first community that we created is WaterView. We built a golf course over in Rallette. I think many of you have seen it. I drove it just the other night to see how big the trees had gotten, because that's really important to us. The way we develop our communities, we always think, how's this going to look 20 years, 50 years, 100 years from now? And so, that's what I was checking out. And WaterView still looks good. It's a different type of community than what we've built in here, but it is still a very nice community. And in fact, all of the communities that we've built in the DFW area are the nicest communities in those cities without a doubt. And then, mayors from other cities have called us and city managers to say, hey, will you go create Savannah or Providence in our town? Can you do that? And a lot of times, we can't, because we can't focus on that many communities, that many projects, because of our attention to detail. We spend so much time on that. So what did we do different? We see beyond the obvious, because it's more than a house. It's more than a house. That's how you live. So how do you live? Okay, this is a map of some of the communities. We're really only focused in DFW. We've had property elsewhere in the United States, in Austin. This is some of the communities we've built. You may have heard of Veridian. And Arlington is the largest master-planned community, Arlington, and it is spectacular. You guys can look it up on the website. Anyway, Solterra is one we're constructing right now in Mesquite, and it'll have 3,300 homes, and it's home, a piece of property the family owned for 100 years. And the city called, said, can you come develop this property? We said, we didn't know it was for sale. They said, we think we need to talk to the families, the Lucas family. Have you ever been in Dallas to Lucas B&amp;B Cafe? Probably have, and it's down in Oakdale. He just refers to be a vertically integrated with cows and dairy products and everything out here. And the family said, we want to sell it to you guys, Huffines, and build something special. So we are. And so, the city worked with us on that for about a year and a half, and we came together on a beautiful community that's going to be by far changed the whole concept, the whole thought process of Mesquite. Okay, so then, Solterra is the one I was just talking about in Mesquite. And... Okay, so these are... Oh, I'm sorry. These are a couple quotes we just got, because I knew I was going to make this presentation. So Monday, I got on the phone and said, call the mayor of Mesquite, hey, can you give me a quote? And the mayor of Crandall, because we also have built Heartland. And you'll find that if you go to... If you ask any mayor or any city manager of any community you've ever been to, they will tell you that we always fulfill our obligations and deliver more than we've ever promised. And that's a fact. Next. Okay, so we focus on amenities, exceptional communities, strong HOAs, and more than just anything. Sensible rival, enhanced architecture. And we do a lot of this, not only in the planning, but also in the CCNRs, what we call the deed restrictions. How do we control what is built here? How do we control the home builders? We cannot actually build houses. We sell the lots to home builders, and so we have to control them because they will cut corners. And I spent so much of my time, Colin, to tell you, this is my nephew, Colin Huffines.
Hello.
......................................................
But Phil, what do we do better?
Yeah, what is it we do better than everybody else?
Everything.
Okay, this is quality architecture. Okay, that's just some of the streetscape that we mandate and that we build. We built the lake and the trees and the sidewalk. This is a streetscape and design that would... All of this would be in Trilogy here in MC, but even more so. So, the fencing is going to be a little bit different. So, we don't allow just fencing. All of our fencing has to be screened and shrub, with shrubs every three feet or five feet, depending on the size of the shrub, and irrigated, street trees, board-on-board fencing, stone columns, quality fencing, and see, multiple trees, and you go a little bit faster. All of the address plaques, all the addresses of each home has to be in cast stone. It has to have a lantern above it so you can see it at night, and you'll notice next to that lantern is the logo of the community. And so, we've always, in our minds, wanted to reinforce where they live. So, there's a logo on the mailbox, but now you can't have mailboxes. There's a logo on the address plaque, and so, we try to... There's logos on all the streets. Also, we have enhanced garage door requirements. You can see, you have to have... Depends on where, but a wood look-alike, wood doors, glass with the different types of handles and things to make it look different. We have driveways that are enhanced, no concrete, room-finished driveways are allowed. They can be either patterned concrete, stained concrete, brick with pavers, or salt finish. I think we're doing a way of salt finish that does look good, and hand-seated aggregate. You've seen the brown box. Our mailboxes, our cluster mailboxes are all custom. We're making those special, and we're putting those... The post office won't let you do single mailboxes anymore, and we're putting those in common areas as close... Because there's a park every 13 or 1500 feet from everybody's front door. There's a little neighborhood pocket park, and so, we want cluster mailbox maybe to be there so that people can gather. And we've had this big discussion, well, I want to put a trash can there and a counter so people can throw away all the junk mail. And the HOA says, no way. They said, no way, that things fill up every day. We're going to go out there, empty it. I don't know. So, okay, fine, no problem. But we try to cover some of these transformers with vinyls. That's something new. That's an inspiration. That's the community over Wylie, and that hopefully you guys will go take a look at. This is a typical developer. On the left, you'll see the streetscape. You'll see that there's no street trees and very little landscaping. On all of our communities, we really fight, and cities sometimes fight against us, to make sure that we can get a tree in the parkway. That's the parkways, the area between the curb and Wylie. We want a tree in the sidewalk between the curb so that it's safe on the street and the sidewalk. So when it grows, it's normal to go down a tree line. And all the realtor could tell you a tree-lined street, it's canopy, it's how to sell more ones without. So, I'm going to back to you guys. Okay, so there we are on landscaping, and they have to be a three-and-a-half to four-inch caliber tree, and they're container-grown, not B&amp;B. Here's a typical subdivision on the left with the fencing and no landscaping, and ours on the right. This is a community I was talking about earlier in Arlington. It's called Veridian, with 3,200 home sites. That one is a huge undertaking, because most of that community was in the floodplain. We had to move 5 million yards of dirt, and the city worked with us extensively on rezoning and changing the transportation. Thoroughfare plant, ballpark way was supposed to come across into the community, and we said, no way that we want a six-point road coming through our community. So, we worked with them extensively. Also, this community's highly successful, and it is right next to a landfill. And so, that was a big, big problem. But Mama, we got you, we got that solved, even though we had to hire hawks to get the seagulls out of the way. You know, the guy with the badge and the arm, you know, so that seagulls would leave and the primate left. And we rerouted the trucks and did just extensive amount of work to make sure that the landfill was not gonna be an issue. And it hasn't been. It's been a big success. That's an entry feature for a hiking trail in Viridian that's not a road. And that's a, Waterview is a very first community in DFW that we developed with the golf course in Rallette. Inspiration is over in Wylie, St. Paul area. That's an 80-foot-long fountain with a piece of art that I designed and the artists that we had to build it, put it up on. And so, it's their monument, it's wrong. But, it's there. And Water State is, Colin, Colin's working that project. That's over in Roy City, and it's a very nice community.
One of the points that Huffines Communities really does bring to the development table here in North Texas is a portal effect, where you know your home. Everything we try to do, primarily spanning archways, blown-out entryways, wider than required minimums on boulevards or medians, we really do blow out our entry features, so that every point of time when you're leaving, or you're coming home, or guests are coming over, it's something special. It's something different. Nobody puts the attention to detail into the portal effect, the sense of arrival, the way my dad, my uncle and I do at the office. We spend hours over it, over the slightest detail of tile selection, lighting, LEDs. I'm a big light guy. I love lights. And I love lights, because most of the time when you're driving in the winter, you happen to be coming home at night, and you want your entryway accent. So...
Tell them how big that V is.
Oh, that V, I think that V is 40-something feet tall.
In the design, that we spent so much time, because how do you put a metal structure up in the field and still be able to light it from the inside? So, Chandler, we created it, and we put the water, the water in the channel. It's a good tree. Change color at night. I'm sorry, Colin.
Yeah, we also get into art, program planning in various parks as well. So, depicted here is a sculpture that we added up in Providence. It's highly popular. The neighbors decorated every year. Sometimes the horse is orange for Halloween, and sometimes it's green for St. Patrick's Day. It's just kind of a way, an example that I have to share with tonight, that the community really gets around the details that we put in to the, to all of our builds. Next. Here's great transition into the parks. I think Donna, Phil, my dad and my uncle, being identical twins, never really grew up. They really absolutely love running around with their grandkids now and testing out parks. We will drive as children 30 to 45 minutes across town, because another developer or competition was coming in, or the school built this incredible park, where it was really, really neat to be able to run around for three or four hours, even in the sand pit to the swings with your dad and your uncle. And that was them doing homework, but also being great dads and uncles at the same time. So, that translates to today, and this is one of our marquee builds in Solterra. We brought in the treehouse guys. That's a good line. That's a good line. All right, you wanna talk about treehouse? All right, you got treehouse.
So cool. So, you guys have seen a TV show called Treehouse Masters on, on History Channel, on Travel. I have never seen it, but everybody talked about it. It was owned for 11 years. I said, "Call them up, we're gonna hire them." So, we hired them to come out here, and this is an absolute spectacular native red oak. It's 52 inches in diameter, 52 inches. And I said, "Guys, I want, I want you to design it." The coolest treehouse we've ever done. So, they've designed this treehouse. These aren't good photographs. It's just now finished, just this last week, two weeks. And we haven't finished with the cleanup of the area and putting park benches and everything. But just the treehouse for $600,000. And it's got a little pavilion for birthday parties, and it's got a crow's nest to go in it. It is really cool. And to get there, we created a promenade. And at the end of the promenade is that 52-inch red oak. Hold it closer. Got it? Sorry. Okay, what is, what else do we do special? Well, we are really big and really focused on the social fabric of the community. You know, look, anybody who's creative and got enough money can make all of the amenities, you know, fabulous. But the social fabric and how the community operates and runs, it takes a lot of time and energy and staff. Most of our communities have anywhere from three to four staff members in the HOA. Depends on how large the community is and how many people live there, such as a full-time events coordinator, welcome committee, how you get your, all your HOA stuff. So, we're big on the social fabric. And in fact, in Savannah, about three years ago, we sold out of Savannah a few years ago, but I got the, I get the stuff from them, and they have a magnet you put on the refrigerator. That magnet has all the calendar, the calendar of events for the year. There were 42 events that the social committee put on for that year. And you know how, you know how we get the social committee energized? Part of the CCNRs and the, have to go, part of the dues have to go to the social committee. Right? And so, whoever's in charge of the social committee now has a budget to go spend, and it's a lot. It saves, you know, $70,000, $100,000 dollars a year to put on parties for the homeowners. I'm getting way too weedy. All right, homeowners association, we always have Christmas, Easter. We love having lakes, and we're gonna have lakes in Trilogy. You're gonna see that in a minute. But these, we have fishing contests, and sometimes we put a tag. We hire, we release fish, and they'll put a tag in the dorsal fin, on the fin that's on the belly, and it has a number. And if you catch that fish, you go match up the number with the prize. And so, the kids love it. Zebco even sponsors the reels. This is Easter, Fourth of July.
Here, let me add a point, if I may, Phil. This, the HOA setup with the creativity that Huffines brings to the table, really brings the social fabric and stitches it together. Without the HOA sponsoring events, hosting competitions of various ways, shapes and forms, car shows even, the HOA fabric is best done when it's set up from the beginning, like the way we do it. And our HOAs in our neighborhood are notorious for great time, a great, great neighborhood that relies on each other in a time of need. And these events and the HOA really bring everyone together.
In fact, to bring everyone together, we created a block party wagon. And it's a trailer, and in that trailer, you can rent it, any, any block can get together, any homeowners. And it has the cones and the barricades. It has a generator, boombox, and uncoolers, and chairs, and tables, everything they need to have, a block party and close off the roads. And so, they just reserve it and come get it and park it, and off they go. Okay, our signage is special. So, any stop sign or, or instrument, uh, street sign, we get the extra-large one for old people like us, and we offset it. This, and you can't see the other side. That's terrible. If the city lets us, we offset it, so that you can see the other road, the name of the other road. These are entrances into villages in Inspiration. A lot of times, not all the time, but sometimes we name the individual villages. And this is a thing, you can notice that the name of these villages is themed off of the words inspiration, success, wisdom, tenacity, things like that. These, we work very closely with the school districts. In fact, we helped design the architecture on both Savannah and Providence Elementary. For whatever reason, they didn't have a front porch on it, and we added and spent extra money to not only incorporate the front porch, so that the kids aren't standing in the rain. We can't quite figure out how you would design an elementary school without a place for kids to stand out of the weather. And, and then put the stone, the matching stone in the columns. We also created these bus stops. We saw the buses driving through the community, and kids just standing around, waiting to get on the bus. So, we said, "That's ridiculous." So, we created bus stops. We're very particular on landscaping, and so, we have a plant list and materials, so that the builders know what they can and can't do with the shrubs and the landscaping material. Let's see, this is, and one thing we've been doing since the Inspiration community, this slide on the right is Inspiration, is to landscape the driveways, because they're front-entry homes, and we want to hide the parked cars. All right? So, we try to, and we make the builders install this landscaping. This is a, what's called a T&amp;D house that's in Providence and Savannah. That means it's made of hardy plank and painted and has a front porch. Only thing unique here, we've built a lot of elevated storage, and so, because we pay for it, we asked the water company if we can name it. So, we put our name on it, since we paid for it. And that's a water tower also on the, on the manhole covers. Can they hear me okay?
They're going.
Better now? Yeah, better now. Yeah, sorry. And the manhole, the manhole covers, I'm sorry. Anyway. But they're custom, and the city sometimes let us use custom manhole covers, and sometimes they don't. But most of the time, they do. And so, we have to order big batches of them. And you'll see it says, "Established in 2014, Inspiration." And we hide as much of the utilities as we can with landscaping. That's just a shot of Providence. We love water. That's other developers' community up top. That's a home, model home, I think, in Inspiration. Community spaces, we're very big on that. We talked about the driveways. Oh, we, this is, Colin, you put it in here twice. Okay, sorry. This is, this is the amenity center in Heartland. Heartland's a huge community. There'll be about 5,000 home sites there. And this is the, it's out on I-20. I don't know if any of y'all have been there. And so, we took over the management in that community in 2014 or so. It'd been operating for about seven years before we got there. And so, this is the amenity center we built, got back up. This is the rendering, and this is the actual thing. So, we love slides and water park and Waterview and Rallette. We were the first in Texas to put in water slides for the kids. And the reason we got that idea, our kids were about eight years old, 10 years, eight, you were...
I know the story well.
Yeah, 10. And so, we go to McDonald's with the kids, and I say, "Who likes eating at McDonald's?" I don't like eating at McDonald's, but the kids love it. And it's 'cause they had a playground right there where you could eat. I said, "Well, we're just gonna do that at the community and have a slide and water." So, we hired the guys at Schliederbaum to come and design the first water park in DFW at a community. So, now, we put those in a lot of communities, but those slides have really gone up in price. And also, the insurance companies don't like it. Nothing ever happens, except my son got a bloody nose. Anyway, so, over here, we have Savannah's amenities there. That's, I don't know much detail, but there's two water slides. We always have a place for kids to have picnics and birthday parties. And then, that's Grotto Waterfall that I developed and designed, that you can walk through, pumps in the lake, and that's a lighthouse in the water, in that slide that actually spins and has a lighthouse. That's Viridian's welcome, amenity center there. And we have sand beaches, and so that the kids can build sand couches.
When, when Phil says that, you know, we put a lot of attention to detail, there's nothing else that compares compared to the amenity centers. The pool features, how a jet is gonna turn, how it's gonna be illuminated at night. This is an hours and days-long discussion. And Donna and Phil love to geek out about pools, how the clubhouse and sunset's gonna work out. This is the type of stuff that Huffines Communities, we do the best, and we're the only ones really in town that pay this level of attention to detail to this type of stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting too much in the weeds. You want me to speed up? We're gonna get, I'm sorry, guys. Uh, this is Inspiration. It's got a lazy river, and it's got a baby pool. On the left there, you'll see is the fitness center. On the right is the clubhouse, a gathering area with a big pavilion up front. Down below is the bathrooms and the kids' center, where they can have their birthdays. This is a shot of the clubhouse itself, inside on the left. On the right is Heartland's clubhouse. This is Inspiration. This is what we promised in Inspiration to the homeowners and to the builders. It's on the left. It's a rendering, and this is what we delivered on the right. This is what we promised the city of Louisville in a large, multi-family complex. And we just, and we were very, it's a very unique complex. In fact, it is the largest transportation-oriented development, because it's on the, on the Denton County line that runs into Dart in Texas. It's 1,400, 1,500 units. You'll notice how brightly colored they are, sand beach. Anyway, I'm the one who put the purple there. No one else wanted the purple. And Trilogy Lakes, community overview.
There we go.
Want me to go? Okay, Trilogy Lakes. We have a total of 898 acres. There are approximately 240 acres in one-acre lots, 27%. 43% of the community is in various lot sizes, open space, 183 acres, lakes and ponds, 76 acres, 10%. This lake on the left is already existing, and we'll, and we're gonna leave it alone. And then, there's two other lakes that we're building for Trilogy Lakes. This is the city limits ETJ map, and that is what this discussion and all of the development agreement, everything we've been talking about, is based on the red, the area in red. That's the ETJ land. Okay? The area in purple or blue was, is in, is in the city limits of McLindam Chisholm and is zoned one-acre lots. The area in the top, in the gray area, is 138 acres in Heath, and has been platted for 63 or 66 one-acre lots. Okay, so, we put this in here, and this is important. At this, at the time this slide was prepared, there were gonna be 2,188 home sites, we thought, in Trilogy. But now, that's in McLindam Chisholm's area, McLindam Chisholm area. But now, the city said, "No, that was too many. We started out with 3,000 or something." But anyway, now, it's 1,800, so that's misleading there. But the city tax revenue at the current tax rate, current tax rate, no future taxes, is a million six a year, over a billion in value. Inspection fees, well, total of about 3.2 million. Water impact fees, the city's not in the water business now, but we're gonna charge a water impact fee anyway to all the builders, so that the city can have money in an account to get involved in the water business. That's 2.1 million. Sanitary sewer revenue is 150,000 a year or so. Plating fees, 220. So, annual revenue to the city at full buildout, the current tax rate, be about a million. Additional developer contributions, and this is all in the development agreement. There's a dedication of a two-acre site for a police station in the future. $250 paid to the city, half a million dollars that they can spend on sheriff or police and whatever they want. And we'll contribute $25,000 a year for five years to go to the maintenance of the city park. And I'll show you that in just a minute. Featured amenities.
This is gonna be cool.
Here in Trilogy. The city park is located, Colin, do we have another slide on that?
Next slide.
No. That's trailed. There it is. Dedicated city park. We found the very best spot on the lake to put a city park. It's a two-acre site, and it's gonna be open to the public. Most, just to make sure everybody's aware, all these amenities, unless it's publicly dedicated or for the homeowners only, you have to be a resident and a member of the HOA. Yes, you do not. This is open to the public. Here's an image of it. It's what we currently are proposing. It's got a dock going out into the water. It drops off pretty quick there. So, it's back up on the hill, and it's got a pavilion, bathroom, playground. Here's another image, rendering of it. And there's the playground and the shade structure. It's really an amphitheater, so that the city can have bands and, and events there, and people can rent it and do whatever the city wants. Little bit out of order. I'm gonna go... This is the actual land plan of the amenity area, and the amenity area is located at around about, I'm gonna back up one time.
That was it. Back one more. The green highlights it in the middle.
Say it again.
Go back.
That's fine.
Other back. There you go. No, don't click that one. It's the big one, or the one below it.
Okay, the amenity's located on this green belt here, this purple. There's a roundabout right there, and then that road comes down out onto 505, 550, I'm sorry, and then goes back up. And then, the main road goes all the way back up to, it says Jeff Boyd, but that's Rabbit Ridge. And the amenity center is here, and then we're building two lakes here. This is an old map. And that roundabout's at elevation of 505. And then, the lake that we're building's gonna be at 568. So, we've got 35 feet of fall on that one amenity center site, which means it's gonna be beautiful, just beautiful. You'll be able to stand in the clubhouse and look down and look at the lake. You'll be able to look at the pool. And what we've proposed right now are two buildings, the clubhouse building and the The clubhouse building and the fitness building, similar to Inspiration with a structure in between. And then we've got four pickleball courts. I understand that MC probably doesn't need any more pickleball courts. I think you guys have the largest pickleball facility in, like in the US or something? That's pretty impressive. And tournaments and all that? Well, Trilogy's going to have their own tournaments and go compete over there, I hope. And we have a big swimming pool, playground and the structure there, you can see, barely see it above the pickleball courts. I like to design the areas for the, for the parents to be elevated so they can see the whole playground and they can see everything going on. It's going to have a swim-up pool. Let's go to the next slide, please. Here's a, here's a rendering of it. The pool on the right is the adult pool, although you're not supposed to say that for some reason, I don't know. But everybody loves an adult pool, they get away from the kids. What makes this one really cool is the topo because you'll see in the, in the video we're going to show in just a second, this area is about eight feet higher than this area. So, these cabanas are built into the hill. And so individuals can stand up here and still look out and the cabanas aren't blocking the view. And that's the adult pool and it's down here on the water. You can see there's still quite a bit of fall to get down to where the water is located. This is the entrance. Another still shot looking down the corridor. We love shade structures, lots of shade. This is the green belt between the two buildings. And looking back up at the two buildings with string lights and beanbag toss. I don't like using the other word. Cornhole. Beanbag toss. Okay. Thanks. Okay, this is a shot of the ballroom or the event center room at sunset and this is set up because that's exactly where the sun's going to be located. This is in the daytime. The fitness and there will be a yoga area, Pilates area along with cardio and then the weights are up around the corner of this. And we keep the weights on the bottom floor for very valid reasons. But the cardio, sometimes it'll go back upstairs. This is coming off of the swim-up bar. There's a swim-up bar on top. And then there's a little slide here that comes down for the kids. Down by the water is a fire pit. This is once again another still shot of the adult pool. And why don't we roll the... You ready to roll? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, a video. Go? Oh, here it is. And he's under 35, he should know how to do it. There we go. Here are music. Oh, y'all can see it, but it's not on the screen. Okay, great. We're going to start back up, guys, sorry. I think we got everybody back in. All right, go ahead, sir.
Just to recap, this is a video of the amenities center incoming for Trilogy.
Yeah, ready, go. Should have been narrating, I'm sorry. That's the, the main pool. We'll have boulders in the pool for the kids to play on. And this is the top of the swim-up bars. It's shaded. There'll be barbecue pits out here or barbecue cookers. You can see they can swim into it and then they can slide down that slide from that pool. That area can be rented separate. This is the west side of the clubhouse. We have these big shade structures. Each one of those levels has its own barbecue so that homeowners can rent that one level and just have an outing there and barbecue. And that's going to be astral turf or artificial turf around the pool. And this is the top pool. We learned you have to have a separate top pool in case there's an accident and that'll be shade structure. And that's the fitness building. The camera's headed to now. And this is the playground with the pickleball. With the little pavilion for mom and, you can watch pickleball or watch the kids. That's an outdoor yoga facility elevated by the fitness. And then a jogging trail that runs all the way around the community. Okay, everybody ready to buy a home? Okay, never mind. Okay, Colin's going to go back and tell us about the trail system. I skipped over the trail system because we've got an extensive trail system, I think, that's very important to the community.
So, yeah, Phil, pick up where you left off. We're out of order on our slideshow. But one thing as a millennial that is really important to me is living as actively as I can. And in my community at Waterscape, I'm building Roy City's best trail plan, best trail system in the entire town in arguably Rockwall County until Trilogy. We focus on the details, like I mentioned before, and they're not forgotten in any master plan trail system. What we're doing is we're using existing easements between water lines, gas lines, and expanding right-of-ways out of our own dime to make sure that this entire community is connected for grandmother, for mama in a baby carriage, for myself on a bike. What we've discovered is that you really have to create a destination to get people out of their vehicles or on their feet. And that destination will certainly be the amenities center here. And then the trail system going through it will add a lot of connectivity for everybody to take an option to really just maybe stay, you know, extra fit, get their steps in. Go out and run a nice, safe walk with your, you know, infant baby in a couple of strollers, meet up with other moms. Waterscape has a wine and walk going on right now and it's super popular amongst all the moms within Waterscape. And this is the type of healthy, active activity that a lot of millennials really are gravitating towards and as our buying profile in North Texas is growing, we're choosing these communities that have extra options for us to raise a family, to stay fit and to really have a place to call home. So, what you see here depicted is several different dimensions of trails. The 12-footer and the 10-footers are the feeder, the main thoroughfares, and then the six and eights are feeders. Again, all give it, we're giving up land for this and to add to connectivity and activity to the community as a whole.
Thank you, Colin. Yeah, the 12-foot trail's necessary, that width in order to get bikes on it. Okay, next, we were, we were done with the video. And next on the presentation, the entering features, back up one slide. Okay, this is the walls and the columns that will be in Inspiration. We've already chosen the stone and the design of the column. I'm sorry, I see it's in Trilogy. Sorry, thank you. This is the entrance on 550. It's burned, you can't tell it because that's a one-dimensional plane and you come in and then there's a two-lake feature. And the reason you're going to ask, "Why is there two lakes?", it's because one lake's at a different elevation. We pump water up into that, it cascades into the other lake. So, when you're leaving, we split the roads a lot in our communities so that you don't have traffic going side-by-side at you all the time. And so when you're driving out of the community, you're looking at the waterfall and you drive into the community, you're looking at the fountain. This is the entry feature as currently designed, as currently designed. Because it's a little artistic, I don't know. Some people think it's artistic because it's got the circles. Thanks. And this is another image just up higher. Thank you. Okay, great. And then I'd like to, now after you've seen Trilogy and the type of community it's going to be, this is a very high-end community. I mean, this is going to be the nicest community, of course, in the county and I think in all of DFW. And it's just very important to us that we pay attention to the details and that's exactly what we do. Now, I wanted to talk about water because last night at the P&amp;Z, it confused some of the P&amp;Z members about water, although that's not their role. But let's talk about water. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, that was something that we wanted to help McLindam Chisholm, MC, get into, get into the water business. Water, retail water for these water supply companies can be profitable. I think I stated that last night. I think they can make anywhere from $2 or $3 per thousand, it depends. All of the water in North Texas, pretty, I mean, not in North Texas, but in this area, comes from North Texas district. And there are member cities and it's a little bit confusing because the member cities were the ones who signed up back in the 1960s or 50s when it was created. But you can also have a quote, "direct connection" to North Texas supply. And so all of the, so when we, when we started this process, RCH has what's called a CCN, Certificate of Conveyance and Necessity, for this area, for most of McLindam Chisholm and of course Trilogy, although we have areas in the commu, in McLind, in Trilogy that RCH doesn't have a CCN. So, the state gives monopolies to water suppliers. It's a monopoly. If they can't supply the water, you can petition the state to remove that monopoly from your property. And so when we first came, came here and discussed this, in this development, RCH said to us, "Oh yeah, we can provide you with enough water for 300 homes. And after that, you have to come spend X amount." First, these water supply corporations don't spend any money to hook up anything. We pay for the elevated storage, which is the water towers. We pay for all the water pipes. We pay, wherever it is, we got to go get it and pay for it. And whatever size is needed, the developer has to go get it and pay for it. All they do is sell the water and make the money. So, RCH said, "We'll give you 300 homes." And I said, "Okay, great. That gives us time. Let's look at what's it cost to put in the rest of the infrastructure necessary to serve the development because we want a long-term solution." And then, and then a few months later, it became obvious to us that RCH wasn't going to be able to get any additional water from Rockwall. Rockwall doesn't, wasn't going to provide RCH any additional water. So, we said, "Okay, we have to find another, another avenue, another solution." So, at that point, we went and talked to, and I say "we", Matt Atkins here, the, one of the engineers, and Chris Cooney, the other engineer, went and visited with the various water supply corporations. That's High Point, Blackland, and even down to Terrell and Rockwall. Rockwall's not interested in being in the wholesale water business, so they said they were kind of out. And so we said, "What's another alternative?" Visitor of High Point. High Point said, "We can also serve 300 or 400 of your homes, but then you're going to have to spend X amount to build elevated storage, booster pumps, et cetera, et cetera." And we said, "Okay, fine." What about Blackland? Blackland, I don't think Matt ever even sent a proposal in because they said it was outside their area and they just weren't going to get involved. And so then we went to Terrell because High Point buys water from Terrell and Fornie. So, those two cities sell High Point their water. Those two cities get their water from North Texas. Is this too much detail? Okay. All right, sorry, get in the weeds. So, they buy their water from those two cities. They have wholesale wa, they have contracts with North Texas, those cities. North Texas doesn't particularly, anyway, North Texas regulates who, those cities' ability to go sell to others. And so they felt they could get that resolved and just recently, so we went to Terrell. And since they were buying water from Terrell, we said, "Let's just go to Terrell because that's a better long-term supply," we thought, "than..." And since they were buying water from Terrell, we said, "Let's just go to Terrell," because that's a better long-term supply, we thought, than High Point. I don't wanna get, you know, saying anything wrong of High Point. Terrell's a big city compared to that, and they have a direct connection to North Texas. They weren't buying it from another city. So Terrell said, "Yeah, we'd love to serve you water, and we'll participate." The city said they'll participate in constructing it and providing the right-ofway, which would bring the cost down because it's nine miles away. That's a long way to go lay a 24-inch or 12-inch water line. So they said they'd participate. So we had an agreement, more or less, with them, verbal and somewhat in writing. And they were gonna, also, we were able to, to use another developer, which I think the city doesn't want any part of anymore, but that's fine. And so that was gonna lower the cost also to go that far and get the water. But now Terrell's out as an option, so that leaves High Point and RCH. And RCH can't get any more water. So we visited with High Point recently, as of last week. I think some of the council members were there. And they said they can serve the property now. That was a, the previous proposal from them was a year ago. And now they said that they can serve the property with 300 to 500 home sites. And based on the cost estimates and what they need, that's probably who we're gonna go with to provide the water. I wanna make sure that everybody in the audience knows, there's plenty of water out there. There's plenty of water. North Texas has ample supply. It's just who is providing it, right? RCH doesn't have a connection to North Texas. They buy from Rockwall. Rockwall doesn't wanna sell RCH any more water. Fact, for a lot of reasons. I won't get into that. So we are decertifying RCH from our property because they cannot serve it. In the meantime, about eight months ago, I think, maybe longer, RCH in, in the city of MC entered into a memorandum of understanding where RCH was just gonna transfer its, its assets and its CCN to MC. MC's, is my, I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, has been trying to say, "Well, how much is that costing? You know, what do you have in the bank? What are you, what are your obligations? What's going on here? We'd like to be in the water business." RCH, it's my understanding, has not responded to any of those requests yet that I'm aware of, sort of. Still chatting with them. So that's underway. And so what we're gonna be focused on is getting our water from High Point, and also the other possibility is to drill wells. There, there's water underground. It's expensive. It's usually, the reason cities don't do it because it costs more than just tapping onto a nearby water line. But that's also an option. We can just drill wells. It's drinkable. You don't even have to put Ora on it. You don't even have to treat it. It's at 3,200 feet. It's the peluxi formation, and it's expensive to go down there and get it. But there are two wells nearby, and we've been monitoring those wells for the last year or so with the quality of the water, and the water's drinkable, fine. It's good water, and they have good production. So that's another option. We can just drill a well until the whole water situation resolves itself. So we're working hard with MC to get the water situation resolved. And so our, our community, Trilogy, will have adequate water, and it's just a matter of that. And so last night, the question was asked at P&amp;Z, "How do you know that you're gonna have adequate water?" And, and the checker balance, I guess, because I've never had this issue. Number one, as a developer, we're not about to go put millions of dollars of infrastructure on the ground. If we ain't got any water, I mean, how am I gonna sell a house? How am I gonna do anything if I ain't got any water? So that's, that's first checker balance. So until I, I'm not starting construction until we got a firm's long-term supply of water. And two, in order to get a building permit from the city, one has to have the city checks, what now? And the fi, before you can construct any vertical construction, you have to have a building permit. And then the city checks to make sure you have fire flow. Fire flow also means water pressure. You've gotta have adequate water pressure for the fire trucks to come and put out a fire, so it's not just a dribble coming out of the hydrant. So that means you gotta have booster pumps or elevated storage, which creates the pressure. And then there's another checker balance, which is the plating process. Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's really water in a nutshell. That was a small, was a big nut. Again, so, um, ready? We're done? Okay, we're done. Any questions, or does anybody have any questions, Council? Thank you.
Alright, then we'll move on. Moving on to item six, which is six, we'll comment. Uh, both of, will be, will be, will be.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bev Stevens, and I live at 279 Partridge Drive. On my form, I actually indicated three things I wanted to talk about. The first two, I will wait until it comes up in the agenda to address it. But the third was just a little thing called gratitude that I want to give to two councilpeople who this is their last meeting. And they are the bookends, Lorna and Trudy. Thank you so much for the last four years that you have put in serving this city. I know it's not been easy. I know there's been good times and bad times, but y'all have stuck with us. So thank you so much for what you have done for us.
Mike Hatcher, 175, FM 550, the great city of McLendon-Chisholm, unless I want mail, then I have to say Rockwall. The, I wanted to start off, I'm here to talk about agenda items, 8.9 and 8.10. This is on our entrance to our business corridor, really the entrance for pretty much everybody else into our great city. First of all, I want to talk about trying to unify our citizens. So much of what I've heard tonight about Trilogy, this is the, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen much of it. That would've been nice to have that available online. And I think there's been a lot of emotion. People getting worked up, a lot of conjecture and hyperbole, and, and, these deals aren't easy for guys like Huffines, guys like me. I am a commercial developer, but I've lived in this county for 25 years. I live on the property and will live on the property. I plan on developing. But the vision for this city and what citizens like myself and neighboring cities who are, you know, whether they live in McLendon-Chisholm or not, this is something for them as well, if they're in the ETJ. The vision that we have is, is, is nice. You know, it's not, you know, just like, they don't want super-packed-out neighborhoods. I don't want a super-packed-out commercial development on the corner lot with, you know, they'll tell us what kinda activity is going on. If you look at histories, it's not good. There's a lot of logistics involved in building one of these. And so getting in a hurry and making mistakes, we're gonna regret, regret for long periods of time, is not something we should do. I am up here to petition and ask the city council to reject the motions before that project. But not only to reject it, but also reject it with prejudice. Let's send that thing back down. Let's start over. It's a mess. The, the little drawings I gave you, just some explanations. I know they look like red lines that some marine drew on a, on a map. No offense, Mr. Mayor. But these are egress and ingress lanes that you'll see in most commercial developments. This commercial, the first page, on page one, is actually the new Brookshires development that went in at fate. I didn't pick it because I love it. I picked it because it is the newest development. And a lot of us, I see you guys at Fresh, y'all like it like I like. And it also happens to probably gonna be something very similar on this property we're talking about. These red lines that were highlighted, these are 30-foot lanes. You will not find hardly any parking along these lanes. They are for egress and ingress. These subsidiary lanes are for parking, for safety for pedestrians, safety for cross-traffic. The, and this is standard. This is, go to Costco, go, go to Tom Thumb, go around the developments around our community. This is what you see. This is what we want to see as citizens of McLendon-Chisholm. We wanna be able to drive through without hitting people. We want to be able to back out without people clipping the back of our car. You know, it's, it's little things that separate what a good development is and a very bad one is. Page two is Tom Thumb. You're gonna see the same thing. Nice, wide, flowing lanes for traffic to flow through, and then separate lanes for parking. You also notice at the back of these buildings, you're gonna see plenty of access for MEP stuff, or your, I mean, if you ever see the trucks that come and clean out these commercial, commercial grease trap is gonna be 1,500 gallons plus. You're not cleaning out in the back of your truck with a bucket. Like, it's a big tank, comes in, cleans them out. We don't want that in front of our building. We already have one in our city that smells and is not maintained. It's not a grease trap, but we all know what I'm talking about. We don't, we don't, we would like, we'd not like to have another one. Three is a simple design for mod pizza. You'll see, the reason I pulled this one off, these are Google Maps. I took none of these photos, and this is, page four is hilarious. This is mod. It's a small, it's on a very similar-sized lot as the corner we're talking about. This is 2,500 square foot on almost the same footprint. Think about that. 2,500 square foot, extremely similar footprint. We're talking 2 or 3 tenths of an acre versus 13,500. Big difference. You notice the truck, the 18-wheeler reefer delivering product is going into the back. It's not blocking the fire lane. Go to page four. This, from what I found, is the flagship for the developer that's, that's wanting to develop this corner. And you will see, big delivery truck blocking the fire lane, wheeling a vending machine across the parking lot to the other end of the site. This isn't what we want in McLendon-Chisholm. This isn't what we deserve, you know? And so I'm asking that we just take a break, step back, let's start over, and let's really analyze what's happening on this corner lot. Is that five minutes? Thank you so much for your time.
Well, first, before we get to the rest of the targets, name, name and. Name is David Black at 1419 Santa Lane. McLendon-Chisholm. And as a citizen, I'll just give you that opinion later. Lovely sales pitch. I'm not sure if we were wanting to see any sales pitch. The water explanation was interesting. But there could be more people here than you think that don't want, you know, it's possible. And that they're actually honest people. They're not dishonest, like you're accusing some, some of us being. So just understand that there is a quality of life here. And that's why the city had, its comprehensive plan had its pieces. And I can see that you put Heath's and Rockwall City Limits to one-acre lots. The rest are not one-acre lots. Some of your own drawings show houses 10 feet apart, 5 feet to the center line in each direction. 7,000 square foot, which is like 1/6th of an acre or something. Even some of Verity has larger lots than here. Like double, no, even more. Quarter, about a quarter acre is this, quarter, acre is the smallest they have. So anyway, there's a lot of people who who care about our community, and we actually live here. We don't go somewhere else. And we see traffic. We see overcrowding. We see strained infrastructure. Just a real mess. But I just thought that Huffines made up some political attacks which were inappropriate. 8.3, the, the annexation services agreement. It seems to have a, it, it ties closely to the development agreement, which I haven't seen a copy that you guys have produced for us in one of these packets of hundreds of pages since almost every paragraph in the annexation services agreement says, "According to the development plan," or "Details in the development plan," or "Any conflicts between this thing you guys wanna have and the development plan go to the development plan," or agreement, development agreement. But the concept of a services agreement for annexation, in other words, you won't annex, they will not annex, allow you to annex unless you change your laws and your rules in your city. Isn't usually the way it works is, if you wanna come and live in our city, you follow our rules? Or is the developer telling us what we have to do for the privilege of annexing? So that, that's just maybe a misunderstanding on my part. I'd like to ask a question, but I can't. Anyway, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to see, to see an approval of that annexation services agreement.
Adrian Balkam, 1518 Forensic Court. So I'm gonna just go down the line items of the agenda. 8.3, vote in favor of approval of written annexation services agreement with MC Trilogy Texas. So the items that are pretty standard for an average development agreement to address. So when you go through the item, it's in your packet, it's gonna talk about emergency services, solid waste, which is trash services, okay? There's a line item that's been very controversial, so I just wanna hear, I wanna read it out so that you understand the importance of this. Police protection from the city of McLendon-Chisholm Police Department shall be provided to the annexed area at a level consistent with current methods and procedures presently provided to similar areas commencing on the effective date of the annexation ordinance. Another line item in E, which says, "Water services, road and streets will be provided by the developer. Water service to the property will be provided as set forth in the development agreement." And as in the presentation, Mr. Huffines did identify and address that he is working on that because that is gonna be his responsibility, is to be able to put, put water in it. So it's infrastructure that they're paying for, not the city. They're not getting it from RCH. They're not getting it from RCH. They're not getting it from RCH, they're not getting it from Rockwall. So that is going to be something that they are resolving. 8.4, vote in favor of annexation. MC Trilogy voluntarily wishes to annex into the City of McLennan-Chisholm. This ordinance is constitutional and meets the expectations of the development agreement. And I am aware that all the city council and mayor have received the 100-page document of the development agreement, so you could review it to know exactly what's in it, and then make reference to what is in your packet tonight. 8.5, the city council should vote in favor of approval because the zoning application does meet the zoning regulations with the approved concept plan, development agreement, and the subdivision regulations. There's already ordinance adjacent to the property, and this is the remainder of the property. So I understand there was an issue with P&amp;Z last night. Please be sure to refer to city attorney as well as Mr. Mike Coker to address that 8.6, vote in favor in changing the ordinance from AG to a PD. Please get information again from Mr. Mike Coker on what the city council's authority is on that subject matter. Okay, so this is a different subject, which is, I need y'all to take notes, so you're going to have a discussion hopefully in regard to the RCH confidentiality agreement. As you remember, last week, I was here to talk about the, I did literally print it out, or Mr. Conrad did, print out a copy of the September resolution that the city council approved, okay? I brought that to the RCH meeting for April, and there may have been a flub on words with Mr. Colen, and he used the resolution recently, and that was not the document that I had literally provided on their desk. And so the document that is on the actual agenda tonight is the draft copy. I want to address that it's important, we need to go back to the resolution in September. I want to ask, like, what's wrong with that resolution? It actually includes, in the resolution from September, it talks about the timeline of events. There's, it includes reviewing of the system and accounting, et cetera. And there's actually on item four, it says review period and right to inspect. When you look at the item that's on your agenda packet, it doesn't have any of that. So I have concerns with item seven, item eight, 11F, 1621, 1623, and number 31. So now I would ask that you will respectfully, I'm respectfully asking, for there will be no second if you decide to make a motion on it and let the item die, or make a motion to decline as written, or I will suggest a compromise. In the original agreement that the city council passed as a resolution in September for RCH to transfer assets to, as well as customers, you could request for an amendment to be added there in regard to confidentiality. And I just want to thank you for your service, Councilmember Kipit, and also Ms. Trudy Westner, thank you for your service to our city.
Trudy Wright, 1513 Barolo, McLennan-Chisholm. And mine's super quick. I just wanted to acknowledge two of our council members tonight. I wanted to acknowledge Trudy and Lorna for voluntarily supporting this city in the incredible way that you have. To have stepped up for one term, I think, is remarkable for all of our council to see that need, and I thank each of you for that. To return a second time, I think, is heroic. I think certainly some of these recent meetings, I think that's probably relevant, but it's, I think, outstanding to respond to the call, to be a public servant, and the two of you have done so admirably. And I really want to say something specifically to Lorna. I remember when you started your election and working with Noreen at the Chisholm County store to do lemonades or coffee chat with Lorna, and that spirit of approachability and availability has carried you through from your citizen letters that you have sent us of just incredible updates, your Facebook post of trying to keep us current on what's happening within the city, as well as your open hours. I felt was outstanding to just be so accessible for all of us, to come in, to agree, to disagree respectfully, but to always be heard and to always be treated with a level of respect that you have given to each of us. And so again, to the whole council, thank you, but to Trudy and Lorna, a special thank you, and to Lorna, just thank you for showing what great stewardship of being a city council member looks like.
Okay, John Tauss, 216 Devonport. Got a lot to talk about in a short amount of time. First of all, beautiful community, just make them one acre. Let's just follow the laws. We don't have any problem with development. We just ask that you do it with the rules that were set up before. Want to talk about last night, not regarding water, but briefly, and somebody just mentioned this because there's been a lot of confusion on here. The service document says that we will be providing a police department. So let me read this, Part B. Police protection from the City of McLennan-Chisholm Police Department shall be provided to be annexed in the area level consistent with the current methods and procedures. We don't have a police department. So I don't know how we're considering this and how we're agreeing to something that we don't have. We're not prepared for it, it's a burden on the taxpayers. So I urge you strongly to stop this madness now. Next, Mr. Hildebrand was back just a couple weeks ago, talking about, and many of you may have seen this in a video, stating that the council can bring anyone into executive session if they feel that they can make a better decision on whatever that they're doing. Then he also referenced Mr. Holla as the one that he understands to establish this understanding. This is completely wrong and false. So when we talk about lying, we need to get the facts straight and know what the rules are. This to explain, and what he wanted to do, was Chris Cooney, which we talked, was mentioned earlier, Philip of the Trilogy Development. They met in this executive session behind the closed doors with you, Mr. Mayor, the city council. At the last court hearing for the lawsuit, it was revealed that Misty, their attorney for Trilogy, was also in attendance via video in a laptop that was brought in on their laptop, the developers. Okay, this is a Toma violation on page 64, you can go to it, take it online, look it up. In the handbook, on page 64, who may attend a closed meeting? It reads, only the members of a governmental body have a right to attend the executive session, except that the government body's attorney must be present when it meets under section 551.071. A governmental body has direction to include in executive session any of its officers and employees. So of course, you guys are all right to be there. Whose participation you deem is necessary to the matter under consideration. On the following page, it also reads, a governmental body must not admit to any executive session a person whose presence is contrary to the governmental interest protected by the provision authorizing the session. There is no, and I'm going to repeat it again, no exception in the Toma Act that allows a developer of a planned development that is under consideration to meet behind closed doors with the city council. Under the handbook, penalties and remedies, section 11C, it reads, section 551.141 provides that an action taken by a governmental body in violation of this chapter is voidable. Voidable. Before this section was adopted, Texas courts held as a matter of common law, the governmental body's actions that are in violation of the act are subject to judicial invalidation. Thus, a development agreement created while violating state law should be invalidated. I urge you, I beg you guys, to stop this madness. We have no problem with developing. We need transparency, we need rules followed, we need people telling the truth, and we need you guys to be advocates for us. And that's what I ask as a citizen here. Thank you.
Misty Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. Speaking again on agenda item 8.3, the annexation services agreement is in compliance with state law, and we respectfully request that you approve it, consistent with the anticipated approval in the ETJ development agreement that was previously approved. Agenda item 8.4, related to the annexation, again, we respectfully request that you annex the ETJ property, consistent with the contemplated annexation in the ETJ development agreement. With respect to annexation and following laws, if folks that live in the ETJ want to petition for annexation into the city limits, just like MC Trilogy has done, I expect this community would welcome that. With respect to zoning, we're all aware that the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission last night tabled the zoning. I would remind the council and the community that there is no obligation under state law to zone property at the time that it's annexed. The law allows, chapter 43 of the local government code, allows the community to annex property even if they don't yet have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission related to zoning. I would also remind the council and the community that this project has vested rights. Those vested rights have two independent foundations. One is the ETJ development agreement that was approved in October of 2021, and a separate second independent vesting opportunity came when this council and the P&amp;Z considered the preliminary plat and approved it. So the project has vested rights, and we respectfully request that you annex the property.
I'm here. Britta Jo, 256 Stevens Road, Rockwall, Texas. Those who truly know me know why I'm here. I'm here because of a deep love for where I live. It's special, it's unlike anywhere else I've seen in the metroplex. I have nothing personally against Philip Huffines, and I am personally so excited that he came tonight and presented to all of us. Trilogy may very well look like those pictures. It might not, I don't know. But what I do believe is that Huffines either didn't take the time to understand the community he was coming into to build ahead of time, and why we all chose to live out here, or he knew and strategically tried to keep all of us out of the know. I have never said I'm against development. I'm all for beautiful development, but I am most importantly for responsible development. And the areas where I feel Huffines and the city have been irresponsible come down to two things: infrastructure and ethics. I genuinely don't believe, however beautiful this development would be, that we have the infrastructure to support it. Myself and many other citizens have concerns that we have addressed many, many times to this council about the water, the wastewater, the roads, and the traffic. I understand Huffines seems to believe that he's got the water, but notice that he still left it open, and you have not seen any signed agreements or promises. So what happens if all of that falls through, but you've already annexed the land? I don't know, but this is a question you need to be able to answer for yourself, or do not vote tonight. The second is ethics. At the beginning of this presentation, Huffines said that they presented this two years ago, which would be around April 19th of 2021. That is a lie. The first time Huffines presented this was August 24th of 2021. This is the first time it was presented publicly to the city council. Huffines said at the last meeting that they negotiated with you guys for two years to get this done, but then, as Misty confirmed tonight, they signed the development agreement on August, on October 27th of 2021. The development agreement was signed just two months later, after Huffines showed up and presented to the city council for the first time. So what was happening here? This is where the Toma violations come in. The fact is that the citizens of Texas have a right to open and transparent government, and as John and Bob will make clear, this development agreement was made in violation of the laws that govern the type of city that MC is, a city council-led municipality. And as such, only the city council has the authority to negotiate terms of a development agreement. But in the August 24th meeting, the city administrator admits that Huffines has been having negotiations that have been going on long before it was ever formally brought to the city council. This is a violation of state law, and we are fighting it currently in court. Timeline-wise, after Huffines presents August 24th, there's only one public hearing on December 8th, and then Trilogy disappears from the city council agendas. So he showed up publicly in our town in August and was gone just four months later. This is what worries me and has from the beginning. If this was so great for our community, why didn't you and the city involve us in it? Why did the city then violate Toma and not even properly notify everyone they were required to by the law? I've talked to a developer in this area who sent notifications to people in the community he wasn't even required to by law, just because he cares that much about involving the community. If you truly believe this was a good deal for us, you would have done the same, but you didn't. This is a community with a vision, a vision that is not aligned with this much density. I believe all of you, including Huffines, knew that from the beginning, and this is why you violated citizens' rights to open and transparent government, to get the deal made behind closed doors and without public input from the start. Well, guess what? That's why we're here now. People want public input in this community, and we are not letting our rights to open and transparent government, protected by the state of Texas, be overlooked. We are taking this to our state officials in the courts, and when it is, we will find out if you actually violated state law to do this. You could have all avoided this from the beginning, but instead you broke the law. Now we're here, and we're not leaving until this is done right.
Thank you, Britta Jo. All right, I apologize to the next person because my eyes are getting a little fuzzy with my contacts, and I don't know that I can pronounce your name, so I'm going to give you your address. Is it 228 Devon, Devonport? Your handwriting's a little hard for me tonight, so I apologize.
I can't hardly see right now, so I'm just doing my best on that. All right. My name is Courtney Loy. I live at 228 Devonport, and I'm one of the community members, and I'm not a mob member. I just would like to see the development that we have been, that we all agreed upon, that we all gave input on. I'd like to see that be what we get through this program, or whatever's going on with this Trilogy. The community center and all that looks beautiful, but I've lived in a community like that. Most of the time, none of that is even used. I love the trails, and I think that would definitely be used. And I think that they could maybe cut back on some of that and maybe go to larger pieces of land for the houses, and then we would be able to get what's within our plan. I know the annexation is going on, and I'd like to protest that and hope that you take no action, and that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. I can read the last name, but I'm not sure on the first name. The last name is, if I say it right, Manus? Huh? And what's your first name, ma'am? Gina, okay. Gina, okay. Like I said, my contacts are getting a little fuzzy tonight. You're next.
I tried to write it more clearly tonight.
You're fine.
No, it was probably my writing. First of all, thank you for your time, and to Mr. Huffines. You know, we moved out here for, quote-unquote, "the rural heritage, the low density, the residential development, and maintaining the country feel." Unfortunately, I didn't see that on the video. It did not reflect what we are here. Now, granted, I know you can't stop development. That's fine, but as I explained last night, we're getting the cart before the horse because we haven't taken care of our own house first with respects to the water. I know that's a hot topic, I know Toma's a hot topic, but it needs to be addressed. So, you know, I was always told, "Be faithful with a little, and then you're given much." We haven't taken responsibility and handled correctly what we do have, and all of our energy and focus should not be on this right now. It should be on our water situation. That RCH gets their water from Rockwall. Rockwall gets their water from North Texas Municipal Water District because they are a member city. I do not know where things stand tonight. I'm unclear on what progress has been made so far, but a member city that, along with 10 other founding member cities, started more than six decades ago. How many cities have they let in since then? Three. Richardson in 1973, Allen in 1998, and Frisco in 2001. That's, the last city was 22 years ago. So it's kind of, you can see the concern for us, thinking we're putting all of our ducks in, in, in all of our, whatever you want to call it, into that basket, because it's very unlikely, and as of right now, we don't have a plan. I heard from him, it's a, after going through all the different facts about all the different water places, and I appreciate that information, there was the word "possibilities," and there's still options, and so, as others had described, there's a lot of still just unanswered questions. I know you can't build houses without water and, and all of that, but still, we're in the place we're in right now with our water because we issued way too many building permits before we had the infrastructure. Let's not repeat our mistakes. Let's slow down. Let's get some things solved in-house first, and then look at the development. Now, we, around here, if we want a pool or walking trails, we've got it in our neighborhoods. So none of that interests me, nor the packed-in houses. What would interest me, and what I think would be really, really great? I do think we need to get the Toma resolved, because as the judge ruled, court holds that the City of Heath has standing to secretly for violations of Toma. Sorry to have to say that, but McLendon-Chisholm, but that relief is limited to the mechanisms specified under the provisions of Toma. Now, if, if all of that gets resolved and we can move forward, great, but it kind of nullifies the agreement to begin with, and we would have to go back to the starting board. But say that wasn't. You know, say everything was okay, and you know, there's no Toma violations. Why don't we, to make everybody happy, just spread out the borders of the small lots and just give us more, larger lots, fewer people, because I don't want to have to sit at the neighborhood right here to get out to 550 because there's a long string of traffic, because, again, we've got the cart before the horse, and we haven't kept up with the infrastructure before building. So I'm just saying, can we just take a deep breath, and maybe Mr. Huffines go back to the drawing board and rework this plan? Maybe not, I'm seeing Lorna shake her head. Sorry. Just to maybe expand the lot sizes, get our development. I don't like all the stuff because it looks, all the stuff, maybe Frisco or McKinney, I work in McKinney, but we like the rural feel here. Why not give us some of that in your renderings and in the drawings and in the plans? Might help us out a little bit, draw some ground within this gap we have. So, thank you so much, and I do, I do ask you just to reject it and pause it for right now, and to revisit it once we get things a little bit more cleaned up and resolved. Thank you. I made it before five minutes, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Huh? You did, you did give us your address when you were up there, didn't you? You did state your address when you were up there? If you would, please. Okay, well, she lives at 107 Chaney Place, is that right? Okay. All right. Now, the next one, I can read your first name, and I can read where you live, but I can't make out your last name. Michael, you live on Stevens Road?
Steen, council. My name is Michael Irwin. I live at 2412 Stevens Road, obviously directly adjacent to this proposed structure. You know, I live on five acres, got a tractor. None of this really interests me. People have said, "I have lots of nights, there's a lot of motion and stuff," and so I, I just want to kind of stick to some of the facts for just a moment. Financial components here, just because I'm businessman hat on for a moment. You know, living where I live, watching Fornie grow, just kind of unabated, watch the traffic growing. It always thinks, you know, in my mind, just about the infrastructure, right? Not just what was shown on the screen, right, but all the infrastructure that supports it. I know water's been brought up a lot, but the roads, expansion of roads, we're about to expand 205, I mean, how big a headache's that going to be? But, you know, the city now has around 4,000 to 5,000 citizens is my best estimation, looking, looking online. And if we're proposing 1,800 homes, if we assume four people per home, which is kind of a little around here, maybe bigger with the Catholics, right? So, you know, 7,200 people is what we're potentially looking at, so more people in this neighborhood than currently occupied McLendon-Chisholm. So, I'm speaking today because I'm actually concerned about the city itself, right? So, has there been a profit and loss, a P and L performed on this, on this development by the city? So today, for the first time, you know, I'm kind of new to this, too, I saw proposed income to the city of 1.8 million per annum, and so that was in the slides today. And so I'm assuming that was at the $400,000 per average price house of 1,800 and the current tax rates. And I'll restress the current tax rate. I heard something about raising taxes last night to pay for this. That was from Mr. Huffines' mouth last night. And so have we considered the IRR, the internal rate of return, on this, on this development, right? Is it positive, right? Is 1.8 million dollars per annum on a continuing basis that's fully built out, is that enough to cover the cost to the city? So I know you have to build some sort of law enforcement system into, which is infrastructure, which that may be included, but you have to pay officers over the course of a longer period of time. You know, this is not just coming in and building something that's just going to be here for 10, 20 years. How do you burden that, that cost? The expansion of the fire prevention and fire rescue, how do you cover that? EMS, I think, was also requested, emergency services. Sewage, I'm looking at your agenda, you know, so fire rescue, building official report, community waste, sheriff's report, code compliance, animal control, those are all things cost, and they cost X amount of dollars now at a 4,000 to 5,000 population. So if my calculation and assumption is correct, it's setting 200, more than double the size of the city, looking at your current burn rate on an annum basis, can, can that, can that scale? Can you scale from your current rate to this new rate of the new number of households, the new number of people at 1.8 million dollars per year? So I think, just as a businessperson here for a moment, it's bad business if the cost to service this new development, this new neighborhood, exceeds the tax revenue. It makes no financial sense. There is no good business case for it. Now, if I'm wrong, forgive me, I just want to make sure, I want to bring it up to the, to the people here and to the council, to be sure there has been a P and L properly done for this development to ensure there's a positive, at least greater than zero IRR, internal rate of return, minimum. Is there an NPV greater than zero for this development? This is basic business practice, and the city should be running, you know, we're not the federal government, thank the Lord, we can't run a trillion-dollar deficit, right? You need to be running in the positive, got to pay policemen that you're proposing to employ, pay the existing fire protection service employees, plus the new, plus whoever is else going to be paid to run the city as it grows. You have a very small government right now. I think everybody's here in the room that runs this city. If you've more than doubled the size of one single development, how are you going to pay all these individuals to run the city? So just, I would like you to make sure, or I want to make sure that you are thinking about this from a financial standpoint, not just an emotional one that's been presented here by the, the citizenry. Does this make financial sense? Can the city afford it at this tax rate at 1.8 million dollars per annum? Will that cover all the costs to the city on a go-forward basis? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1228.23][1228.23](APPLAUSE). Bob, you're up.
Bob Steinhagen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. The city council's violation of Texas state law doesn't stop with the developer meeting behind closed door in that executive session. At the March 28th council meeting, Philip Huffines stated that he and the city have been in negotiations for over two years before the development agreement was signed, which is a troubling revelation. That's because McLendon-Chisholm is different than of all other cities in Rockwall County in that we are a general law type A municipality and not home rule. A home rule municipality makes its own rules on how it governs itself, but the state of Texas determines how the rules of a general law type A city is governed. While the mayor of a general law type A city is technically the chief executive officer, beyond the power to appoint department heads and advisory board members, setting meeting agendas which cannot prohibit council members from adding their own items to it, and presiding over council meetings where the mayor can only vote in the case of a tie, which are all established by state of Texas, the mayor's power only extends so far as powers granted by ordinance, adopted by the city council, which can be found under Article 1 of the City of McLendon-Chisholm's Code of Ordinances under general provisions. There, one will find the established ordinances detailing the powers of the city attorney, city secretary, city administrator, and municipal judge, but no additional powers have been adopted to give the mayor any more power except those granted by the state. Additionally, none of the powers enumerated in the city, to the city administrator or the city attorney in the ordinance include the power to negotiate on behalf of the city council because only the city council has the power and authority to negotiate terms of a development agreement unless the city council authorizes or deputizes representatives to do so through a formal vote made during an open session of city council. When I was mayor, we did this. The city council authorized and deputized me and Councilman Scott Turnbull, who died Friday night, to negotiate on the council's behalf with the owner developer of 4,000 acres that we eventually ended up giving to the city of Rockwall. That authorization was done through a formal vote, and the parameters of our authority was detailed in that authorization. By a formal vote, in an open session, the council appointed me and Scott Turnbull to represent them in a lawsuit where the council deputized us to act on their behalf within the constraints that were outlined during the open meeting. When the city negotiated with the volunteer fire department, the council formally voted for Scott Turnbull and Wayne Orchard to represent us within the guidelines established in that open council session. So for anyone to negotiate on behalf of the city council with the developers of Trilogy without the expressed vote of the city council to do so violates the structure and purpose of this form of government, which violates state law, especially if the council and developer are claiming that negotiations with the city council had been in process before the development concept was even presented in an open meeting. When exactly did the city council authorize anyone to negotiate on their behalf? Where in the written record can this authorization be found specifically? Who was deputized to represent the council, and what were the parameters of that authorization? Now, in reference to the annexation services agreement that's under consideration for adoption tonight, let me read from Item B1 under emergency services. Quote, "Police protection from the City of McLendon-Chisholm Police Department shall be provided to the annexed area at a level consistent with current methods and procedures presently provided to similar areas commencing on the effective date of the annexation ordinance. These services include normal patrols and responses, handling of complaints and incident reports, special units such as traffic enforcement and investigations, and coordination with other public safety support agencies." So, when did the city council vote to start a police department? If you vote to approve this service agreement, you have effectively done so, and done so outside of the purview of an open meeting, which is another point of standing for violation of Texas state law. Additionally, Item 3 of this section also requires the city to provide EMS services, which would make ours the only city in Rockwall County to do so. Are we no longer to be part of Rockwall County Emergency Services Corporation? Now, I have provided copies of all, for all of you, of sample agreements created by the state Texas Municipal League, and copies of service agreements from two other cities, including Dripping Springs, which, like McLendon-Chisholm, does not have a police department, and have highlighted the emergency services sections of each so that you can see how out of place ours is in comparison. Since I thought that the council, and I do believe that the council can postpone the annexation until the next month anyway, why wouldn't you want to take time to review and compare the other agreements first? The council should also postpone this agenda item until citizens are given the opportunity to exercise their right to address this matter in a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Time is 8:35. That concludes citizens' comments for the night. We'll move on to Item 7, the consent agenda, which is Item 7-1, 7-2, 7-3, 7-4, 7-5, 7-6, and 7-7. Is there any reason to pull anything off of here?
I'd like to, I would like to suggest that we pull Item 7.7, only because I think it might be more appropriate under direction to staff further on in the budget, since it's not really, which is paragraph nine, which is not really clear the way that the instructions are laid out, unless Mayor Pro Tem Westner, what would be your, would you agree to that? Would you, would you agree with that approach?
Yeah, you have to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Item 7.7 from the consent agenda.
Okay, so you're making a motion to remove it?
Yes.
Okay. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now it's open for discussion. So you want to remove it as an agenda item?
Yes, because it's a direction to city administrator for proposals, and I, I think it doesn't, I think we need to have more information before we just consent on that.
Yeah, I definitely want the, the word "select water utility" defined a little bit better, to see if that assists us really in isolating, getting an RFQ perhaps, and isolating others to come into play on proposals.
All right. All in favor to remove this from the consent agenda, and it's basically killing this agenda item and then bringing it up under direction of staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right. Then back to Items 7-1 through 7-6. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Item 7.1 to 7.6.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, show that unanimous. All right. Before we move on to the items under 8, first off, Item 8.1 had no information with it, so we cannot, we cannot do that. Mr. Naylor, I know you're, he was here, he's outside. I understand the reason for it being on there. David, I can't do Item 8.1 the way it was put on the agenda because there was no information with it, but if it's simply an introduction to you to the council, because I know you're newly elected, we can do that. We should be able to do that during, excuse me, let me get down there to the right wording, to council member reports and announcements, if you can stay for a little bit, okay? But I can't do it under 8.1 because it wasn't properly submitted on there for the audience to know exactly what it was about. 8.2, before we get to 8.2, there is something I want to get done while everybody is still here, because I know it gets kind of lengthy sometimes, during our updates, discussion and direction to staff. As everybody here knows, we have two council members as, who said bookends? Was that you there? The bookends are going to be leaving after the election because they are not going to re- The bookends are going to be leaving after the election because they are not going to re, they did not reseat staying in those positions, and we want to do something for them. Lloyd, if you'll help me out. We're very, very proud of the fact that they served the community. I know a lot of community members were very proud of them and some of the decisions they had to make, and as a token, we want to show our appreciation to both of them. So both of you'll step up front? And keep looking at the items. Both of you step up front?
Can everybody here get enough? On behalf of the city and the city council, right now, and this, and we look in, here, these are, and as in default, if I give a better, better, on behalf of the city, both have your own stupid socks. Hold them out first.
I'm sorry, but sometimes, I always, that is my life. This one was, I was wanting to do it so quickly before everybody got the lead.
That is a great presentation, guys. Awesome.
All right. Now let's move back to our items. 8.2, let me get this, it's sad sometimes when I can move faster than the computer. 8.2, committee appointments. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, our Board of Adjustments and our Planning and Zoning Committees, their terms expired June the 30th. I'd like to go ahead and get a jumpstart, so, because we do have difficulty getting applications. I have attached the rosters for each of those two committees, and as you'll, as you can see, the existing members would like to stay on the board. I believe that we are obligated to take applications, and I would like to suggest, if, at your, with your permission, that I do a mail-out to maybe draw in some more people who are not aware of these committees. We already have labels from another project, we have envelopes, so there'll be no cost to this except for postage.
Okay. Counsel?
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to try to reach as many people as we possibly can to see if they'd be interested in being a public, a public servant in that capacity, a BOA or P&amp;Z.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I mean, that's where I started on P&amp;Z, it's a great experience, it'll get you interested in what's going on in the government, and they can go beyond that, so I'm fine with this.
Yeah, I, I actually would, would like to see it not just cover BOA and P&amp;Z, I think you should also reach out and say that anything that we've got coming up, such as, you know, just potential, any other committees that are coming up, and list out maybe the economic development that we should future have-
Has future-
As a future committee come up, so, and I would even say, maybe even reach out to our HOAs and put it out on their, their stuff, too.
And then if you do want to get the letter together, I can send it to the HOAs also, so they'll get it soft copy, but I think it's, you know, then it's up to them to distribute, but I think if we send it personalized, I think that would be a good idea.
For those of you in the audience, P&amp;Z is the Planning and Zoning. They met last night. They give us recommendations on, on new things coming into the city, whether they meet certain requirements or whether or not, depending on what the situation is, whether it's good for the city, they give us a recommendation. Board of Adjustments is when somebody comes to the city and asks for a variance for something, and they review that and then come back to the city. Very important two committees here within the city, and we're always looking for community involvement, so if you're interested in serving one of those aspects, please get with Ms. Green, or if she's got your address, she'll be mailing you the application. So, highly encourage everybody to get involved. Moving on to 8.3, consider approval of a written annexation services agreement with MC, MC Trilogy Texas LLC pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 43.0672 pertaining to the following tracts of land, an approximate 441.818 acre tract of land and an approximate 133.325 acre tract of land generally located north of FM 550 and east and west of Pullen Road, and situated in the J. Simmons Survey Abstract Number 202, the WW Ford Survey Abstract Number 80, and the A. Rodriguez Survey Abstract 231 in Rockwall County, Texas, identified by county ID numbers 115324 and 115325, and also being a portion of the property described in a deed to Hodges Ranch Partners Limited as recorded in Volume 3828, page 322, as document number 00319510 in the official public records of Rockwall County, Texas. Phew, that was a lot to say. All right. Do we need to make a motion before we do any considerations?
Mayor, counsel, as a point of order, may I provide a point of clarification related to this item?
Speak on this item?
I did.
Oh, okay.
She, you did earlier in citizens' comments, but not during this timeframe, so I'm going to have to say no at this point, but thank you for asking.
Yeah, well, she signed up during-
If she signed up during citizens' comments, and we've held everybody to citizens' comment-
I signed one speaker card for citizens' comment and each of the agenda items related to the Trilogy project.
Yeah, she signed up, but I didn't.
Okay. What's your, what's your point of clarification in here?
Mistyventura9406-
Hold on, hold on, I can't, I can't have everybody hollering up here.
Mistyventura9406, Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218, on behalf of the property owner, MC Trilogy, who is a party to the service agreement. The service agreement was provided in draft form and reviewed by the city attorney. It is in compliance with state law, specifically Chapter 43, Subchapter C3, which obligates certain information to be included in the agreement. There seems to be some confusion related to the purpose of the agreement and the services. The City of McLendon-Chisholm Police Department, we all know, does not exist, and if it makes the community feel better to strike the City of McLendon-Chisholm Police Department, I think the agreement would still be in compliance with state law. There is nothing in the agreement that obligates the community to start a police department. It merely recites state law that you're going to provide services consistent to those similarly situated. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, you know, I don't mind coming in there. If you look at the actual, if you look at the actual wording of it, it's kind of a big ado about nothing as far as D goes. It's consistent with current methods presently provided. What is that? It's nothing. So we, look at the words, the words. What is this? Consistent with current methods presently provided. That's what it says. It's pretty simple. And what are we providing presently? Nothing. So all we're obligated to provide after the agreement, if it is signed, is nothing. Now, it's totally up to council if they want to sign the agreement, and it's totally up to council if they want to strike that provision. I don't want y'all to feel like you have to strike that provision and keep it compliant, because all we promised there is what we're giving now, which is nothing. Again, it is council decision. There is no problem either way. Whatever council would like to do is good. I, I'm not here to tell you what to do, but I'm just here to tell you, hey, what you can and can't do, and either way you want to do it.
May I suggest we go into executive session on this? Counsel? It's at the very bottom right before adjournment. All right. Counsel? Huh? Okay, if you don't feel you need to. All right.
I would like to.
What?
I mean, if we need to, I'd like to.
We're asking you. You're the only one so far.
Oh, well.
Everybody else is willing to discuss it out here, so that's fine.
Oh, then I'm fine.
All right. Guys, this is, let me get back to it. 8.3, consider approval of written annexation services agreement. I don't have a vote in this unless it became a tie, but there are five of you here, so that should not happen, but I'm going to tell you from my standpoint, I believe the way it's worded, I'm not comfortable with it. I, I agree that it needs to be changed because I don't want it to cause a problem for us, but you as a council will have to make that decision. So, that's all I have to say on the matter. So we'll entertain-
Because we can make a motion and then discuss it. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the annexation service agreement with MC Trilogy Texas as written in item 8.3.
A second.
Okay, I've got a motion. Now it's open for discussion by counsel.
Okay. I, I was confused last, whenever we got the packet on Friday, I thought, why the heck are we signing an annexation services agreement when we were going to be annex, perhaps annexing them into the city? So I spoke to Mr. Holland, got the clarification that it is a legal requirement to do so, so I, I had my concerns put to rest on that point, because it's a, it's a requirement. I think it would be cleaner if we did perhaps take out the reference to the police department and to the EMS, because we get our EMS services through the county, so it would just be a bit of a cleaner document, even though I understand exactly what it says. If Trilogy is offering to, to do that, I think that would be a good idea.
I'm fine with that. If it, if it needs clarification along those lines, and by removing it, is going to offer that, better understanding, then I'm fine with it.
So my thought process on this is, there are a couple of things, you know, that we're already going to strike. Why not just put the whole thing on hold and not do anything or take any action on it? And the reason I say that is because while it may seem small, it could be other things in there. So, there is a lot of other legislation, there's a lot of other court stuff going on, there's just so many other issues. If these things are in there, it just seems like, I agree with some of this verbiage of pump the brakes a little bit. It, it hurts nothing just to kind of like sit back and reread some stuff and make sure we're, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and if everything looks good, then yeah, I would be all for it, but I personally am not comfortable with it right now. I'd rather see a motion say that we table this.
Well- Well, I disagree with you, and for many reasons, but I don't see anything wrong with it. Annexing them in remains bringing them into the city, which is a good thing. It's not a bad thing. That means bringing them into the city means we will have the add-on warrant tax. That's not a bad thing.
It's also hard for us to talk when you guys are talking, so please be respectful of us as well.
I, I, I just, I do not-
It's okay if you're happy with it. The question, the question right now appears, and you should look behind it. Do you, do you attain with it, or not attain with it, but you don't have to get it wrong.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
So, are we going to face the limit right now?
Well, I think that we discussed, I think the motion needs to go forward, but we've seen it, it's, the motion, you remember that, and it's supposed to be different from actual to be, okay?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I did not- I have, I did not have it on, I apologize. The question, the question was whether or not we would fix the language now. The motion, depending on how the motion goes, it, it can be to where this is sent back until it is brought back with everything correctly written the way that the council would like to see it.
All I, all I would, had recommended is that we strike paragraph, paragraph B, sub-paragraph, sub-paragraph 1 to paragraph B, the police mention and the EMS. That's all that I was asking to be corrected.
Okay.
I, I personally went through the DA, I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I went through the DA and compared it with what the, this agreement is, and I had been a little concerned about the park maintenance, so I, there is a city park. Well, that city park is to be maintained by the City of McLendon-Chisholm, as it is stated here. However, when you go to the development agreement, the city is being reimbursed by Trilogy for the first five years of that park to pay for that park maintenance. So I was, I had my fears allied there. So I only found that, based on what we were talking, that some people felt more comfortable if we eliminate the police, since we don't currently have a police department, and eliminate the EMS, since that is provided by the county. And so that was my recommendation.
Okay. Were there other issues that you had, or you, on this agreement? Because if there are, I think, I think you need to express them and, and explore them out if we need to-
No, what I'm, what my, what my point was, is if there's, if there's a couple of things-
Okay.
And even as the mayor stated, that he doesn't agree with how it's written, then let's just double-check it all. It hurts absolutely nothing to relook at this.
I think we, I think that it's our responsibility to come here prepared to address the issue, and if you're not comfortable by what you've looked at, then what's another meeting going to do?
Yeah. I mean, you should be prepared already.
One, hold on. No one is saying anyone is not prepared or unprepared, if that's the, if that's the, if that's the-
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. I have seen us table many things. Would I come back to you and say that we're not prepared? No, I wouldn't. My point-
Right, hold on a minute.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
No!
Hold on, Mr. Mayor. I understand who you are, but you know what? Y'all stop everybody all the time, bang salad all day. She made a comment and I can't respond?
And you don't need to go tit-for-tat.
I'm not going tit-for-tat, but you are.
Stop, councilman, now.
Wow, that's a great question.
You quit arguing, and you quit interrupting.
I didn't say anything.
You had something you said while he's trying to talk. I'm going to tell every council member, and remind you right now, we hold them accountable for acting that way. I'll hold you all accountable. I'll hold you all accountable. If you have something to say, you say it.
Then you're given an opportunity to speak as well. But the next time I tell you to stop, I expect you to stop, council member.
Sure thing, Mayor.
Either do, either lead by example and do what you expect everyone else to do?
It works both ways, Mr. Mayor.
It does, and I stopped you because you two were arguing. Do we understand that?
I'm conversing, you're yelling.
Because I'm a little pissed off at your action. You know that.
I think everybody up here does.
Now, can we get back to a decent conversation without both of you acting like that and nobody interrupt each other? Both of you can make valid points, but give each other a chance to finish. That's all I ask.
I didn't really interrupt anybody.
Now finish what your concerns are.
I'm good. I think I've made my point.
All right. He has a valid concern. I agree, those need to be struck. But maybe the whole thing needs to be looked at to make sure we didn't miss anything else that could become an issue.
Mike? Okay, so we, let me ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
We got the packet on Thursday. We had five days to discuss this with the city attorney and the city administrator if we had any questions. I did present those questions to Mr. Hall. My questions were answered. I think what is frustrating me at this point is that we keep seeming to kick the can down the road. And I'm, uh, I feel like we are letting our citizens down by being indecisive and drawing, drawing this out unnecessarily.
And I, may I, may I speak also?
Yes.
I also agree that we do keep stating that we're not prepared and we didn't read through and we're not, and I, I also believe that if we are not prepared, that we're, then that just means that we're not reading what we're supposed to be reading within the time that we're getting our packets. And we're not, and that we're not getting the answers that we need. So either we're not asking the questions that we need or we're just not prepared when we get here.
Okay, then...
Um...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's okay. So I don't know what it is, Brian, that you're either not prepared or you're not getting the questions that you need answered.
This is not, this is not the time to make those kind of statements.
No, I'm just saying, I don't know what it is.
But we don't even need to make that statement because I could say that about every council member, I could say that about myself.
And I, I agree with that.
So we don't make that statement.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I don't know what it is then.
So my concern is if we, my concern is if we're able to go through this tonight, then let's do so. If not, if we're not able to do so, then there's another option.
All right, unless there's any other discussion, the motion is on there to do it as, as Lorna put it, was striking those things. At this point in time, you either vote for it or against it. Is there any other discussion before we make that vote? It's very, very simple process. You're either for it or against it the way she made the motion. Doesn't mean a second motion can't be made. Is there any other discussion right? If not, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion that Lorna made, striking those, those items? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Please do me a favor, raise your hand because I only heard two of you, I want to make sure I got that right. All in favor, Ms. Trudy, Floyd, Lorna, and Dan. Okay? All opposed? Mr. McNeil. Okay. All right, at this, at this point, the motion passes four to one. Okay? All right. Move on to item eight point four, discussion and action regarding an ordinance annexing the following tracts of land pursuant to the request of the property owner, MC Trilogy Texas LLC, an approximate 441.818 acre track of land and approximately 135.325 acre track of land generally located north of FM 550 and east and west of Pullen Road and situated in the J Simmons Survey Abstract Number 202, the WW Ford Survey Abstract Number 80, and the A Rodriguez Survey Abstract Number 231 in Rockwall County, Texas, identified by the county ID numbers 115324 and 115325, and also bearing a portion, oh, also being a portion of the property described in a deed to Hodges Ranch Partners Limited as recorded in volume 3828, page 322, as document number 00319510 in the official public records of Rockwall County, Texas. All right. You gotta turn your mic on, I have the same problem. The one, yours is on.
Oh, it was, I, yeah, I guess there were too many on and this wasn't going on.
Okay, anyways...
Mayor, sir, if, if you notice, right before the eight point four, it's required by state law that you recess, that you recess for a second and sign that document before you move forward on to the next process.
Okay, I apologize.
So our cit, and, and that's, I mean, you can't see it, it's put in there. So if our city secretary can bring you that document and, and you can just recess for a second since it did pass, um, and have that signed, we can move forward.
All right, guys, if you'll give us, and I need to go to the voice room anyways, um, we'll recess for five minutes times nine oh five.
That's fine. Oh, you're fine. I'm going to go to the bathroom.
And I had to tell that guy, the fiscal guy, he didn't quite understand because cities, I love the fact that somebody's speaking fiscal, qualitative, qualitative rate of return or ROI, but he has to also, lots of services that cities provide that are, are qualitative and not quantitative, that they just demand that we have these services that we're not going to get a, a positive ROI. But it's a qualitative ROI, it's a better place to live. Yeah, it's a better, yeah. But it, but you're safer, you're, I mean, there's, they provide some qualitative things that everybody wants. So, and I, I told him, I said, you know what? We need more people on city councils that put that inside, but you gotta understand that. Yeah. Yeah, he's agreeing. He says, oh, sorry, I'm an ETJ, so I can't help you. We gotta watch this guy. He's pointing at the mayor.
So are we going to sign this application? I didn't work this.
No, I don't think it has to be denied. I think this was the only thing that they required to have, or the, the confidentiality is very good. Yeah, but that regularly, if they pass the annexation, it doesn't have to be denied. It's just state law requires this to be done and signed for you to... Oh. You have it written somewhere, it's written.
Folks, folks, we're fixing to get started again. Guys, it's nine sixteen, or, I'm sorry, that's just me. Folks, it's nine sixteen, we're going to get this back, back going. Uh, eight point four, um, it's discuss, I, I read all that a few minutes ago, I don't want to have to read it all over again, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to annex the following tracts of land as written in item eight point four.
Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, it's now open for discussion. Any discussion on it?
I do have a discussion, as y'all might guess, I do. Um, I support the annexation of county property into the city. To do otherwise would be a burden on the citizens of McLendon Chisholm. My allegiance is to the citizens of McLendon Chisholm. Our citizens have been supporting the county dwellers long enough. For example, Smith Road, ninety-nine percent of the citizens of McLendon Chisholm don't even know where Smith Road is, but we use our tax dollars to fix that road so the people in Wellington can get their roads maintained. Silence. Fire. County dwellers don't pay taxes for fire service. My citizens and my city taxes pay for your fire service to keep you and your family safe. The majority of McLendon Chisholm taxes go towards fire department.
Do not, do not be sounding accusatory towards individuals on any of the roads.
There's no, Huffines wants Trilogy to be part of McLendon Chisholm, and they came to the city willingly. This is contrary to the Tellus Man Agreement that wants the city to support them without annexation. Also important to note, as we'll see further done on the agenda, there's another dense community request for the area surrounding City Hall, previously known as Triple Creek. These developers are our neighbors and are not being as conciliatory or forthcoming as Hoffman, as Huffines. My voice is for the citizens of McLendon Chisholm, and my actions and my decisions have always been in the best interest of McLendon Chisholm. Self-annexation is your option. You can come and be part of our city if you wish to. So once again, these houses will be there whether or not they are in the city of McLendon Chisholm. Our city, if you are not annexed, if we do not annex, will be responsible for those services. So I make a motion, or I made the motion to approve that. Otherwise, it's going to be similar and we're going to be providing support similar to what we do in Wellington, High Point Ranch, High Point, Lake Estates, Poetry Ranch, Chism Ranch, et cetera, et cetera. We pay for your services. And that's my comments.
All right, any other comments on... All right, any other comments on this discussion, or any more, any more to discuss on this item?
Yeah, I would like to say something. As of right now, with the, the way things are, the reason I'm wanting to bring in, at least one of the reasons I want to bring in, um, the Trilogy into, uh, bring them into, or annex them into the city, is because it will help our city with the taxes, the ad valorem taxes and things, I'm sorry, what?
Um.
Okay.
State what you need to state. Guys, please be respectful.
So, it will help our, our taxes, because the, um, it'll help our taxes with, or it'll help our city with the taxes. And without the, without that, the people that do pay taxes will just end up paying, kinda similar to where, like, well, um, is it Wellington? Is that right? Or, is that right? Is that the citizens, and other, other, other citizens that, that, that don't pay city taxes. Um, we, we get stuck with stuff like that. And so by, by Huffines bringing in, wanting to come into our city, that just helps us. Um, and I think that's a good thing, and they don't have to do that, and I think that's noble. So, I'm, I'm all for that. I mean, they really don't have to do that. So, I applaud them for that, and, and I'm gonna take advantage of it, and it only benefits us. So, I'm, I'm for it.
Brian? I, I just want to be really clear. I am not against Huffines. I am not against their development, not against what they're trying to do with the Trilogy project. I want to be very clear with that. I'll also be very clear with, I also don't like citizens coming up here vashing our city attorney, our city manager, council. The reason I say that is because I believe in two-way streets, and I try to do everything I can honorably. You may not agree with me, and I may not agree with you, and that's okay, because that's democracy, right? So the reason I am not okay with the annexation at this time, and again, I am not against development, I want to be very clear, I'm not against this Trilogy project per se. And as Lorna stated, that she represents the citizens, as do I. I door-knocked in my neighborhood, and the fifteen doors I knocked on, not one of them was okay with this project. They were McLendon-Chisholm. I didn't knock on Heath, I knocked on McLendon-Chisholm, and had very good dialect with a lot of them. So maybe the citizens you know that you're representing are okay with it, but the citizens that I know are not. And that's why I follow where I'm at right now. But I want to be clear, I'm not against the development. I would like to see the development done where, we've used the term agreement many times. I understand you're a businessman and you want to make money, as am I, but I think you can still make money by not having fifty-foot lots. That's just me, right? I mean, I'm not you. So your vision is different than mine, and that's okay too, right? I mean, it has to be. Um, I, I don't like, you know, the show that we did a minute ago, because we're better than that up here. I'm better than that as myself, and I take accountability for the words I said to the mayor earlier, and I, I apologize to you publicly, as well as you, Lorna, you Trudy, because it's okay to disagree. If we can't disagree and be professional up here, then we shouldn't be. Because at the end of the day, this ain't the city of Brian, this ain't the city of Keith, it's that city right there. And so my heart is okay with following where I'm at. If you want to condemn me for that, or be mad at me for that, or say I didn't prepare for that, fine, I will walk out of here proud. I'm okay with that. Just as I'm okay with representing the citizens of McLendon-Chisholm, and I'm okay with being a neighbor to the ones in Heath. That's all I gotta say about it.
I, I think that it's important to have differing opinions, because if we just all sat here and nodded our heads, we, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be right. And I, I, I think that's a good, good thing to have a difference of opinion, and I think it's good to have a dialogue.
Well, I disagree.
There's always that one in the room.
There's always that family member you try to avoid. He, he's just being funny. He doesn't, he doesn't have anything. And, and folks, um, let me explain something to you. When I went on break, I, I did have to use a bathroom. Um, I apologize to Brian for the way things got out of hand between him and I, but I also want to show you what kind of character him and I were brought up believing in. I want to apologize to all of you for the way you saw me act up here. I apologize. Um, now I will call for a vote.
Any, any more discussion?
Unless, unless there's any other discussion, then it's up for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, can, do me a favor, hands up again. Okay, all opposed? All right, um, Mr. McNeil is opposed, everyone else was in favor, so it's four to one. All right. Uh, the next one. Okay.
Public hearing on, to consider the application of MC Trilogy Texas LLC requesting initial zoning of Plan Development District and updating the conferency plan and zoning map for the following two tracts of land, and approximate four hundred and forty-one point eight one eight acre track of land, and approximately...
I, I'm just offering to save your voice.
Okay.
On this particular one, my understanding, uh, that the P and Z tabled this until, like, around May the sixteenth, I think.
I'm, I'm not sure, but yeah.
It's, that's my understanding. So I believe it's, it's either subject to B or C, two eleven point zero seven, I think it's C. It says, we're not even permitted to have a public hearing until we get a final recommendation, uh, from the P and Z. So my, my advice is just to skip over this item, and I did make a mistake earlier too, so I apologize to you on, uh, when you speak. I thought our pattern was to let people speak at the beginning or during whatever agenda item, because either one is okay. But you told me it's our pattern to just at the beginning, so we should not let Mr. Kipper, uh, speak on that. So now we just, everything is beginning to come, so I appreciate you letting me know. That was our practice. And so my, my thought is just to skip over it.
Okay. All right, then, um, eight point five will be tabled until a council meeting in, the, probably the second council meeting in May, because I'm not sure when the next P and Z meeting is.
I don't know what P and Z is gonna do with it, so...
Tabled until we get a report from P and Z.
Well, we had to table to a date certain. So you could just leave it open.
Twenty-third, till May, we'll table it till May twenty-third, and if we haven't gotten a recommendation from P and Z, we'll, we'll go from there.
We will need to, we will need to re-notice it.
Okay. All right, with that being said...
Obviously, that applied eight point six.
That also applies to eight point six, where it will be tabled until May twenty-third. All right, um, eight point seven, folks, if you, if you got a chance to look at the agenda, eight point seven's on there, but down at the bottom in the, in the meat and potatoes of what it says, says it requests to be tabled, um, until May twenty-third by the applicant, so we won't be... Michael?
I don't understand what you're saying. Somebody made a motion to table it?
No, it's, it's on there that the applicant doesn't even want it addressed until May twenty-third.
Okay, I mean, there's two options. Again, you can actually table it until it's reserved, uh, under the two or, uh, you have to, to, uh, we notice that, um, if you want to, to make table to the money, you can open the public, well, Michael, we have time on today?
No.
We don't have anything.
We've not had anything.
Michael, you obviously have something you need to say. Would you turn that mic on for me, though? There it is.
There we go.
Okay. At the P and Z meeting last night, the applicant had requested that it be postponed consideration until next P and Z meeting, but the Planning and Zoning Commission tabled it indefinitely, with no date certain. And the objective of their tabling was to convince the developer to enter into a development agreement with the city of McLendon-Chisholm. I spoke with the developer this morning, and they are more than happy to enter into a development agreement with the city council and the city, uh, and don't mind it being postponed until they get a draft for your consideration and the review by your staff.
So they don't have a, a developer's agreement, or, or is this Triple Creek?
We, well, the land is in Triple Creek PD. The Triple Creek Development Agreement has expired last year.
Right.
So, so, but the zoning stayed. And so what these folks have requested is a change of zoning from Triple Creek Plan Development District to a new one called Legacy Park Plan Development District. But the P and Z tabled it, so they took no action, except for to table it.
So I'm assuming it's inside our city limits?
It is.
Okay, we wouldn't, okay, yeah, we wouldn't do a development, we could just consider the plan development. If they want to do something different with the plan development, and that's why they asked, you, you can't table it open, you're not allowed to do that. So that tabling is ineffective. You have to table it to a date certain.
And they did.
You have to have a certain date that you know it's gonna be on there, and it's gotta be on there. One item has, the motion is to untable whatever item, and the next item on the agenda will be to consider that item. So, now, I, I don't know what exactly they're wanting to do with the PD, but if they had different ways and ways they want to change the PD, that's fine. They can come to council, and they can talk to council about amending the PD to however they want to do it. Uh, that's fine, because the PD, as we discussed, is the zoning ordinance for that particular tract of land. But there wouldn't be any type of, of development. But if we want to discuss, like, the terms and, and conditions and things like that of a PD, that's, that's fine.
We have nothing, except for the fact that they want to put some houses up and some parks. That's all we have. We have no documentation from them.
What about this existing PD?
It's expired, it's a Triple Creek expired.
No, hey, let me say, the development agree, agreement expired, but the zoning is still there. The zoning for Triple Creek is still out there. Fifteen hundred acres, seventeen hundred houses.
Okay, here's, here's the issue I have with both item eight point seven being the public hearing and eight point eight, is that we have this here, there's not a lot of explanation here, and I'm, I'm gonna go out on an assumption here, but somebody that represents Oak National Development LLC is probably not in attendance, so we can't even ask questions on it. So I have, I have a serious issue with doing either one of them.
And Mr. Mayor?
Obviously, council has got questions and concerns, and I have nobody here that can answer that.
And Mr. Mayor, we don't have a recommendation for approval or denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission, so there is no action that you can take irrespective of what's going on at P and Z.
So...
Well, Mike, I think I have a concern with it, as far as being, is it, so is it still Triple Creek?
No.
That, with the...
The current zoning on that property, that doesn't include the, does not include the fifteen acres that we own here, the remainder of Triple Creek zoning is still in effect. The zoning.
Zoning for the property. As far as what you're thinking of as Triple Creek being a development...
With the golf course, with the golf course and stuff is not there.
All, all of the stuff that was in the development agreement has expired, it was not renewed. Uh, last year was June twenty-second, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but the zoning didn't go away, because we, not y'all, but a previous council zoned it, Triple Creek Plan Development District, and, and that Plan Development District has a lot of density.
So, uh, here's my question. Are we able to change that to ag zoning, since the developer's agreement has expired with Triple Creek?
You could authorize a public hearing to consider a change in zoning, yes. But you'd have to do that. You'd have to authorize a hearing, Planning and Zoning would have to consider it and make a recommendation to it.
So we would have to provide direction to staff? We obviously can't make a motion. It would be direction to staff, if council wanted to do something like that.
And if you want to, if you want to think about that, it needs to be on an agenda where it's posted.
Mm-hmm. So it would suggest, oh, I'm not gonna suggest anything. It was just a question.
Now, I just want to know, why would you choose it back to ag?
Because then we wouldn't have the amount of homes that are proposed coming into the city, and they would have to, they would have to come back to us with the one-acre lots, I think.
Well, here's, here's the thing. Why are they not zoning? They're asking for, they're, if I'm reading this right, they're asking for a change to the existing zone.
That's correct.
They're inside the city limits irregardless.
They haven't asked for anything, because they've withdrawn their, they've tabled their request.
My thing is, we, what is the, what is the exact term we need to use to end both of these tonight, not as far as table them to a future agenda?
You've got two options on this one. You can table them to a date certain, if they like making either, if you want to do that, on eight, seven, eight, eight, or you can simply take no action and bypass them. They're done, which still, I mean, it's the same, it's the same. The only thing is, by moving past them and taking no action is, you can put them on any agenda if you want to in the future. Tabling is, you're locked into that date, because that's the point of it. You're locked into that, that date certain. Either way, we're sitting at the folks' notices if they're gonna be zoning and have a public hearing.
All right. So when we do a no action?
Yeah, there's, there's just, you can just simply go. Is there any action on eight point seven? If nobody says anything, moving on to eight point eight.
All right.
There it goes. Any action on eight point seven? No?
No.
Ready?
No, but can you do it back to the a, to the ag?
I can do it on...
We, we need to, uh, I, I don't think we can talk about that now. I just asked, I just asked the question of Mr. Coker if that was feasible.
So, eight point seven has no action.
Okay.
Eight point...
Moving on to eight point eight.
Eight. All right, is there any action on eight point eight?
No.
Brian, Floyd, Dan, Lorna? Okay, moving on to eight point nine. This is a public hearing on a request to approve, for approval of a special use permit. Hold on a second, folks, 'cause I just, okay. Thank you. Too many things thrown at me at once.
A public hearing on request for approval of a special use permit for a restaurant to be located on a one point five acre tract in the King Latham survey, Rockwall Cab, property number one zero one three two one, generally located south of the intersection of FM five fifteen and State Highway two oh five in McLendon-Chisholm, Texas. All right, the time is nine thirty-seven. Public hearing is open.
Good evening again, council. My name is Bev Stebbins, and I live at two seventy-nine Partridge Drive. A lot of this is going to be a repeat of what you may have heard me say before, or say last night at the P and Z meeting. I am very concerned about the SUP application for this property. The letter from Mr. Cameron Sloan says, "The purpose of this SUP is to illustrate the proposed retail building, and most especially, the restaurant with an order-ahead drive-up window." But, your staff report from Mr. Coker, the city planner, says, "This applicant is requesting approval of a specific use permit for a restaurant with an order-ahead drive-up window, and the ability to serve alcohol for on-premise consumption." The SUP application from Mr. Sloan does not mention onsite consumption of alcohol, and I, first of all, have real concerns about the discrepancies in the application versus the staff report, and second of all, as I have stated many times, I'm very concerned about alcohol being handed through a drive-through window. I understand the drive-through window will not have a speaker box, it is for call-ahead orders, but no one in this community or the surrounding area is too lazy to park their car and walk in and pick up their order. Alcohol coming out a drive-through window, I'm not a teetotaller by any means, but that absolutely grates on every nerve that I have. So, P and Z is going to recommend, recommended to deny this SUP, and I would ask you to uphold their decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
R. Kipit, thirty-one Fireside Drive.
R. Kippit, thirty-one Fireside Drive. My, my opposition to this is very simple. Texas law has a specific prescribed pathway for a city to turn away, to allow itself to have sale of alcohol, beer, wine, mixed drinks, or liquor, whatever, in restaurant situations. We've never undertaken that pathway, which is a vote by the citizens of the city itself. The, there is a provision through Texas alcohol to bypass that and go to a special use, a special use permit, but I think that bypasses the spirit and intent of allowing the citizens to have a vote on what they want to see consumed within their city. And they can, they can make that, like, declaration. It can be wine and beer. It could be alcohol. I mean, I agree with Bev's comment, you know, handing it, handing it out through a window is just, gets to a, you know, even, even further down the road. So, I'm just, I'm opposed at all until we allow the citizens to do so. There's a right way and a wrong way to do things. And if we, if we do it through the SUP, we're speeding, who knows where that goes? If we do it the right way, takes a little more time, but it's not that hard, do an election, and then let the citizens decide what they want to do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Matt Atkins, on behalf of the applicant, addresses eight two five Waters Creek, Suite M three hundred, Allen, Texas, seven five oh one three. With regards to this application, it was our understanding through the application process that the SUP could handle, could cover alcohol sales in the restaurant. The applicant is perfectly willing to say it is for onsite consumption and does not intend to have any alcohol for to go, or sales for, to leave the premises. Additionally, we would respectfully request that the council approve the SUP with the pickup window and pickup lane as shown on the site plan, but if not, we would ask that you allow us to return if you're going to uphold the P and Z's recommendation and deny the application, and we request that you would do that such that we can bring it back as quickly as possible to remedy any solution, any issues that we have there. For that, I'd have, I'll answer, be around to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not?
It is.
Nine forty-two, public hearings closed. Move on to eight point ones, eight point one zero, discussion and approval of a special use permit for a restaurant to be located on one point five acre in the King Latham survey, Rockwall CAD property ID one zero one three two one, generally located south of the intersection of FM five fifteen State Highway two oh five McLendon-Chisholm, Texas. Before I open it up for a motion, I want to remind council, we've, we've had this discussion once before concerning this property, and you as a council, the rec, the motion that you made and the conditions you made, this, there would be no drive-up pickup window, any of, anything to do with a window that could pass any kind of food or beverage items through it. This is returned not only with that on it again, but now with onsite consumption of alcohol. I, as a mayor, am adamantly opposed to it, because, one, you already told them no window, and it's been brought back again. And I'd have to say, I, I agree with the comment that we heard during citizens' comments is to not vote, not vote for this, but to, you know, say no with prejudice. But that is, I'm not the deciding factor here. You guys have to make that decision.
Mayor, may I have one quick thing?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, you may.
So, while the council can do whatever they want, it's y'all's call to do that, please remember that once you start doing something once, that typically generally normally, there's three or three, you always say yes, you always say no. Third one is, sometimes you say yes, sometimes you say no. Typically, generally, normally speaking, you're safe if you always say no or you always say yes. There's no way you could say, hey, this situation is different from that. Once you start saying, again, council's call, whatever the council wants to do, which is a quick reminder, once you say yes one time, and you want to say no the next time, you, then we would have a burden to show why it was different.
Mm-hmm. Fair enough.
Could I ask the planner a question, please? Mr. Coker, you could go to the podium. So if we deny the request for the restaurant, that developer can just put stores in there? Is that true? Or what, is that true?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And for, if I may expand on the answer, the council approved the site plan with several conditions. No pass-through window, no drive-up, had to have, if there was going to be a restaurant, it had to have parking that was outside, no, no ability for anything to be passed, alcohol, food, anything to be passed through the window, or a drive-up lane, a drive-through lane. So, you, you approved the site plan, the landscape plan, and the elevations previously. And by doing that, you've allowed them to do anything that's allowed in the general business zoning district that does not require an SUP to be in acceptable use in the buildings as long as they comply with the approved site plan, landscape plan, and elevation.
Mike, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
What was submitted to us and what was approved was, don't hold me to it right off the top of my head, but the concept plan or the plan was two buildings, one of them being a restaurant. All the terminology and everything that's brought to us stipulates and says restaurant. So if one of those buildings is a restaurant, the other one's not, and they, they can still come back and build whatever they want in that second building and it not be a restaurant? Is that what I'm understanding?
A restaurant in the city of McLendon-Chisholm, in the general business zoning district, doesn't matter whether it's got drive-through, doesn't matter whether it sells alcohol, they all require an SUP. And the only way to get an SUP is to go through the zoning process and end up with a, with a planning and zoning recommendation that you can accept. Now, their recommendation is denied. And, and that, and I may, I talked to our city attorney earlier, the council has two choices if you want to uphold the Plan Commission's recommendation. And that is denial, which they can fix it all up and come back with a, with a new site plan if they want, or a changed SUP application. They can do that. Or with, with prejudice. If you do with prejudice, then they can't file the same or similar kind of act, uh, request for another full calendar year. So, I think the options are, are to follow the, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of denial, and provide them the opportunity to regroup and come back, go back through the whole process, to not deny it with prejudice, which means that they can't ask for a restaurant, and I'm going to go back to the, the site plan question, for a year, because you will have denied it. Or you can approve it with conditions. And, and that, an approval of the request with, let's, for the sake of discussion, no pass-through window, no alcoholic beverage service, that's a lesser included in the SUP application, and the council has the authority to do that. The site plan, my recollection of the site plan, shows two buildings. And I don't think that either one of the buildings on the site plan was specifically labeled. I think they had square footages. And, and the site plan showed the drive-through and all the rest of the stuff that we dealt with at that hearing. And I, I, I need some help from our city attorney as it relates to the site plan. My belief is that, if they can't get an SUP for a restaurant, then that second building, the smaller of the two, the twenty-five hundred square foot building, could be any legal use that's authorized in the general business zoning district. That's my belief.
If I remember right, it was supposed to be a sit-down restaurant. Am I, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
No, you're not wrong.
You're right.
Okay. I mean, it's been a while, I don't even remember what the heck we're supposed to be looking at. I mean, literally.
Yeah, the discussion, the discussion was really centered around two buildings, one being a commercial building and the other being a restaurant. I mean, that had been the top...
Well, here's, here's the thing, guys. Let's, let's, let's not keep kicking this can around. Mike, I understand exactly what you explained to us, and I appreciate that. The issue is, it's been brought back up again. You've already said no in what the conditions were. Okay? Now your, now your option is, you can either say yes, you can say no, or you can say no with prejudice, which Mike explained, means they can't come back to the table for a year. That was your option. You, you have already spoke and told them no window.
And what is it with prejudice? Was it, was it supposed to be...
One year, if they can't come back for a year. So, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll entertain a motion on this.
Do we have the site plan and what this is in hand?
So just so I'm clear.
Correct.
They came, they presented their plan. We said no, with conditions of no drive-through window.
No, no drive-through window that you could pass?
That you can, right.
Pass beer drinks?
So they come back requesting a drive-through window plus alcohol.
That is correct.
So I'd make a motion to disapprove the special use permit for a restaurant to be located on the one point five acres, two twenty, two oh five, five fifty.
So you're just, just, so I'm clear?
I don't want to deny it.
You either make a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Make a motion to deny.
Okay. So, finish it out with the special use permit.
Or deny item eight point one zero.
I'll make a motion to deny a special use permit for a restaurant to be located on one point five acres of King Latham survey.
Okay. I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now it's open for discussion, if there's any questions on it.
No, I don't have any questions. I just don't think that we need to be punitive and, and pass this with prejudice. I mean, I, I would like to see them modify their plan and, and, you know, present it again, and not to postpone this for a year.
I know, but I think the way you wrote the motion, you just mentioned the drive-up, drive-through. You didn't mention the sale of alcohol in your, in your, in your motion.
Then we'll take a vote on it. If the vote doesn't go, we can add, we can ask for a new motion. Okay? All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Aye.
Opposed.
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 Okay. Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay, so they're against that original motion now. I'll entertain any other motions.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to deny the request for a special use permit for a restaurant with drive-through, drive-up window and sale of alcohol for on-premise consumption.
Okay. All right. I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
My issue is, they coming back with the same request, and we were clear that they needed to be changed.
I guess I was giving them the, the benefit of a doubt, and just, they just hadn't cleaned up their paperwork. I don't know, but...
I disagree. All right. The motion's there, the second's there. If there's not any further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Brian, I need you. Okay. Floyd? This is, this is denial.
No.
Huh?
No.
Okay. Show that unanimity, Mr. Reserang. All right.
Wait. I think it's not in, we all said aye. Did you say aye or no? You're opposed to, to the, uh...
Okay, and then I apologize.
You don't, you're, you're opposed with the ability for them to come back. You, yeah, so it's...
All right. So, there's four, four. All opposed? Aye. Okay. I apologize. Four to one. All right. Moving on to eight point one one, confidentiality agreement. Was there... This confidentiality agreement has to do with RCH and being able to go in there and look at the books. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. Mayor members of the council, we have met with, with board members of RCH. We've been trying to, to get inside RCH to evaluate their system, to evaluate technically, fiscally, administratively, to understand what their CCN has, what their water system is, so we can do our, a better due diligence of doing that. They have, for, as Ben mentioned, multiple months, said, given us a few different reasons why they weren't going to let us, let us, um, enter to do that type of analysis from, from talking to their, their attorney to various other things. We had a discussion with them, and they finally came and said that if we could have a confidentiality agreement, we will let you in. They went to their board, and I'm not sure what exactly happened in the board meeting, but their, their, my understanding is that their board is, is amenable with this confidentiality agreement. And, and if you see, there's on page, page one fifty-four of one sixty-four, the third page in, there's some in yellow that they requested changed on there, which has been updated into this agreement, that they would be willing to, to approve this confidentiality agreement if this, if the city council did, and then, then let our, our technical and fiscal and administrative people in to evaluate their system and, and create a study to bring back to the council of, of what the CCN is, what their evaluation of the CCN is, from all the technical aspects, from the storage to the water type, I mean, everything within the water system, to the fiscal analysis of it, including our, our, our director of finance, Mr. Smith, and, and go in there and analyze and bring back and create a study to show to the council what, what's, what's involved in their system. What's in good shape, what's in bad shape, what's potential fiscal needs, how much money they have, as, as, but they want to have this confidentiality agreement signed before they let people in to do it.
Here's, here's the, here's the one thing I am going to say, council, on this. I, I understand a confidentiality agreement where you, you don't want to let people know the intimate details of your business. I get that when there's, when there's negotiations going on about things like that. What I don't want to see, and I'm looking at this, this yellowed-out part about the final copy that they received, is depending on what information is discovered, found, whatever the right words are, during this, this time of looking at their stuff, I think it needs to be in here that they, they want a copy of it, which shows in the yellow. I don't want to see that they can use that information to help them with any reports or requirements or reports to the state or to the water, you know, TECQ, the, the Water Commission. Because if we're paying to go in there, we're paying experts to go in there and look at this, and they're going to come up with numbers and information, I, I want something clearly in this confidentiality agreement that they can't use that to fulfill any reports or requirements that the state may require them, unless they're... that the state may require them unless they're willing to pay for it.
Correct, and that's very well taken. And so if the council is in favor of approving it with the statement that the mayor said that they can, we approve it based on this requirement, we could make that and send it back to them and say, here you go, then you can decide whether you want to approve it or not.
I just want y'all to think about that before...
I was wondering about the citizen comment about making an amendment to the resolution that we sent to them. That would seem to me like a clean way to keep this packet together. Because we sent the resolution, what would be the problem with doing amendment to that resolution?
You could, that resolution included the asset transfer agreement, which was a complete draft. I mean, before we, we don't even know what they have, and we had a list of all these things that was just made from a prior city or a prior entity, so that was really placeholder stuff instead of real estate. By going in, we will have definite asset requirements that we can include in that asset transfer agreement. But that's well taken.
Yeah, I understand that now, because that was really just a draft.
Right. We were basically sending them a message that if you're serious about transferring this, this is what it's going to entail. We're not paying for it, we're going to take all your assets, we want, and now we're saying, we want to know what they all are, we want to know the condition of what they're in, we want to know the useful life of what all the equipment's in, we want to know how things have been done, what's your rate structure, what you have in your bank accounts, look at any financial paperwork that they have, which may not be as much as we had hoped, look at their past year's audits, any type of fiscal analysis that we can do, including how much money they bring in each month for their water services, what's, like I said, their rate structure, as well as everything about the system, as well as operating that system, and the ability to increase water flow through that system, as we would like to potentially in the future, and how much it would cost to do that. So a pretty in-depth analysis of what that system entails, and then bring it back to you for your review, and then continuing on with that resolution, et cetera. But it's very well taken that we, as the mayor said, we don't want to do all the system and then just take it and say, hey, thank you, city, we're paying for this analysis, and we're going to go fill out our forms and our reports and our requirements.
Might it be a good idea to show this if we haven't shown it to the water attorney that we hired? Did we already show it to her?
We just are illustrious, the attorney drafted this.
I mean, it might be...
It was a basic draft.
It was a draft, and allegedly they approved the draft, but then they came back with this...
No, I'm talking about the confidentiality agreement.
Oh, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. But they haven't reviewed this yet, have they? Puffines? I mean, sorry, RCH?
RCH has seen it.
Okay.
So I explained to you what I saw in it. So I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, can I talk for a second?
Go ahead.
Oh, never mind.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
If we have a motion and then we get to discussion, there's plenty...
Oh, okay, yes, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this confidentiality agreement.
I'll make a motion to go into a confidentiality agreement with RCH on the water transfer.
All right, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, now it's open for discussion. Now, what questions do you have, Mayor?
Okay. Well, the, I would like to suggest that we do have our water attorney look at what we have gotten made up, but I do have a problem with the confidentiality and who we do have doing the work for us. I do not believe that we need to have Ray Smith looking at the financial. I do believe we need to have an auditor looking at it, not a, an accountant, because he's just going to do the check and balances of it. I do believe we need to have an auditor that can actually do the auditing of it. So, that's my opinion. And then I also believe that the first part of it, that Mr. Halla had drawn up, has dates and things that is important and holds them accountable. I believe that's very important. So, and I've got more things I could say, but...
All right, any other discussion?
I would agree with seeing if we could get our water attorney to look through it as well, as it compares to the draft resolution that we sent over.
Yeah, and I just think that we could use that and then use the confidentiality as an appendix or an amendment, you know, and just have it as one, you know, just have it as, I mean, just stating that it, that we can do it as a, you know, that we will keep it competent, you know, confidentiality, you know, type thing, that we don't need it, and need, we'll keep it between us. I'm tired of y'all.
So are you approving, would recommend this amendment? Have you spoken about it, or is it just as is right now?
Well, my motion didn't call, I didn't really put a change in there yet, but that would be then y'all would say no to what I said.
You can ask for a modification.
If I'm the suggestion, Mayor, if y'all want to have Emily look at it, I think that's a great idea, because like I said, I was just asked to drive, I did a rough draft, and everything I know, it's, you know, over, and so I didn't even know about all that. So it's fine, so for everybody to be on the same page, that might be the way to go, is to say, hey, direct counsel, go send it to Emily, and then bring it back on a later date.
And also, Mayor, if I can add, I'm confident that she's a very competent attorney, but she's a water attorney, and we have our city attorney that is very competent as well. And if we don't want our, our finance director looks at it, it's because when it comes to the city, everything has to go through our finance department. So to allow him, who's been involved in the business for 30-plus years, and done multiple audits and finance, I mean, has been involved in municipal finance, is something that I believe is prudent. Is it the only person we can bring in from Mark that is well-renowned, that we use right now to also come in? I mean, we can do anything that the council decides, that if you want to be as detailed as you want in evaluating the overall system, both technical as well as fiscal. I mean, if you have specifics that you want to include, we can go and find those, and there's no problem whatsoever. We want the council to feel very comfortable, but what I'm saying, I guess initially with this, is they have said they're not going to allow us to into their system until they have a confidentiality agreement, which is not really water-specific, it's a confidentiality-specific.
And Mayor, just to acknowledge, I appreciate your time very much as a City Administrator, but I was given very little detail in my draft, very little specifics, very little data, very little information, when I drive this with the general confidentiality agreement. Remember what I told council, I don't know how many months ago, water is a very, very, very hyper-technical, hyper-specific area of law. That's all that Emily does, she does nothing else other than water. So based upon the fact that my data that I had available to me was very low, and I did a basic confidentiality agreement, it protects certain things, and this can be very technical when it comes to water, I think, I don't know which concern to catch it, but I think it's a good idea to ask Emily to look over it, at least to know whether or not there's anything water-specific that should be included in the confidentiality.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
You want to withdraw, or you want to amend?
No, I'd like to withdraw it and then provide direction to staff to do further coordination with the city water attorney on the issue and bring the confidentiality agreement back to council at the next council meeting.
Got no action on this item? Is that correct, counsel? Moving on to 8.12. Discussion and action regarding the requested approval of a final class of a Bear Point subdivision, 9.78 acre tract of land located on Dow Road, most of the intersection of 550 in the city of McLendon-Chisholm, extraterritorial territory. Mike, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application last evening. The staff recommendation was approval, subject to 15 conditions that are required by our subdivision regulations or our fire code. The commission disapproved it, subject to compliance with the 15 conditions. What that means is that under state law, they have an unlimited amount of time to fix all the problems, which is what I recommended that they do, and to bring it back, and the Planning and Zoning Commission then will consider it when it's been redone and it complies with the 15 items. They include everything from the required emergency vehicle access roadway, turnaround, they've got one lot, private drive, that is 419 feet long. If you have a fire lane that is, or a fire apparatus access road that's more than 150 feet length, at the end of that, you have to have a turnaround that meets the requirements of the fire code, it's also part of the subdivision regulations. So I've specified in each case what section of our code they require, is required that they fix and bring back. So whether it's approval with the conditions or disapproval with the conditions, they have unlimited time to go fix it and bring it back, and so we'll be seeing. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation is disapproval, subject to compliance with the conditions.
Okay. Hold on, is there a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend disapproval as defined by Planning and Zoning at their meeting on April 18.
That's their decision.
Yes.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's open for discussion.
Just goes without saying, there are 15 conditions that they've put on this, so I don't think there's much of a discussion.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on to updates, discussion and direction to staff. Actually, I had a couple of different things. The confidentiality agreement, let's get it fixed and brought back to us with this one?
This one was one.
And then 7.7, that, I maybe misunderstood that, but I thought that was, what did you, what do we call it, an RF?
RFQ.
An RFQ, out for bids for everyone to bring to the table. Yes, I thought that's what that was, I apologize. So that needs to happen, I mean... And then David's not here, he's obviously left. Folks, you understand, 8.1 did not have the information provided to the citizens as to what he was here for. It was simply, he is the newly-elected president of RCH, he wanted to introduce himself to council, you know, we'll get to that at the next council meeting so he can meet everybody and I'm sure say a couple of words to the crowd. That does that. Council member reports and stuff, for me, I don't have anything, I apologize for my approach and the way I handled things earlier. We're only human, sometimes we lose our tempers, and I apologize. Trudy, you got anything?
Yes.
Okay, Lorna? Dan?
I watched him before I came on console, and I was impressed with his acumen about how city governments run, and then just the tenacity, the detail orientation he had. He was ready to mix it up with anybody, and he could back it all up with facts, so I had an appreciation of him, and I was really taken back by hearing of his passing, so just wanted to say that.
Brian, you got anything? Lloyd? Okay. It is 10:15, everything's been covered, meeting adjourned.